Given that it's six fifteen, while we work, continue to work out the Zoom issues, um, I think we will go ahead and open and, um, at least start moving through our agenda. So it's six fourteen on Monday, March thirty first, twenty twenty five. I'm calling to order the select board meeting. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We should hopefully have Zoom at some point. Um, and I believe we should be airing on, uh, local access, um, live as well as being recorded for re-airing on local access and our social media channels, including YouTube. Um, we currently are four member board in person. We have member Galvin, um, attempting to join on Zoom at the moment. If we can stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I would entertain a motion moving into minutes Treasury warrant April. We have approval of Treasury warrant twenty five dash twenty and twenty five dash P W twenty five. I would enteration to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns, considerations?
Anything, Austin, through the chair? Anything, Austin?
Uh, this is a larger warrant. It has our final debt service, um, payment for this fiscal year.
Okay, to just the debt service? I mean, not to the school or anything, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I. Tom, can you hear us? Waitman, I. Can you hear us? Tom?
Trying to get him again.
All right. Peter, then.
This microphone they have. Did he raise his hand or anything?
I think he's the same bug that showed up last week.
He said nothing. Um. We have minutes from, um, March seventeenth, twenty twenty five, which was a regular meeting. Um, and the March thirteenth, uh, which was a budget meeting. Um, I will ask for them to be separate as I believe there is a different group of people at, in attendance. So we'll start with the March thirteenth meeting minutes. This was the, uh, joint meeting with FinCom and the schools, both Bay Path and, um, Wachusett. Tom and I were absent at that meeting, so it was Jen, Paul, and Harry.
Uh, motion to approve March thirteenth, twenty twenty five meetings minutes as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any comments or anything for the March thirteenth minutes?
No.
Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I. Waitman, Epstein. Um, moving in onto the March seventeenth meeting minutes, we have, um, I believe Tom was absent for these. This was a regular meeting minute, uh, regular meeting. Um, everyone else was in attendance. Is there a motion?
Uh, motion to approve March seventeen, twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, a motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any questions, comments, considerations?
Uh, yes, I do have a comment.
Sure.
To the chair.
Sure.
Uh, on the town line welcome sign.
Yep.
I do believe Michael Direkis was here. He was sitting in the corner as part of the committee. So I'd like his name added to that.
Yep, I remember that. So it was Sabrina, Jeff, Chris, and Mike.
Correct.
Yep. Is the board amenable to that? Yep, change?
Yep.
Um, so would the board be willing to approve with that, um, edit?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in, I.
Ledger, I.
Waitman, I. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry, for that.
Moving into public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Name an address, please.
Go ahead, please.
Nick Pantos, thirty-two Palmagussett Road. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the select board. Tonight I am here as a concerned citizen and a patriot. The lack of care for our country's flag in the town over the past few months is but unacceptable. These are the Stars and Stripes of the United States of America. We must display them with the utmost respect. After seeing da- after seeing damaged flags flying on the town property for over a week, not knowing who to contact, I decided to submit my concern online. On twenty-three February, I submitted a total of five concerns via the online portal, four of which were regarding display of the U S flag. Two were for damaged flags and two were for lack of proper display at night. For the sake of this comment, I will focus on one, that being the damaged flag flying outside the public safety buildings. To my surprise, I received a responsive acknowledgement the next day. However, the flag was not replaced until last week. That's nearly a month. Friday, twentieth, March is when it was replaced, over a month later. According to the United States Flag Code, chapter, uh, title four, chapter one, subsection A, respect for the flag. The flag, when it is such, in such condition that is no longer a fitting emblem for display, should be destroyed in a dignified way, preferably by burning. Damaged flags are not fit for service. Having a damaged flag flying on any property for more than one business day is unacceptable and insulting, especially to those who have served our great country. Waiting for the wind to calm down is not an acceptable answer. We live in Rutland. There should be new flags ready, and if not, the damaged flag can be retired in a timely manner while waiting for a replacement. Please ensure this concern is passed through the necessary channels. I look forward to seeing our country's flag being treated with respect moving forward, year round, not just in July. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Austin, can you just make sure? I think generally, I know, um, public safety is generally public safety that manages that. I think some of the others are DPW. I'm not one hundred percent sure. You can, don't mind following up, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Name an address, please.
Uh, just for the record, I'm stepping down as select board member to speak at public comment. Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. Um, I have a statement that I'm gonna read. Uh, on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, myself and another resident submitted a proposal to the chairs of the Bylaw Committee and the Town Charter Committee for their review and consideration. What has transpired? In the few days since this proposal was submitted is upsetting, disappointing, and frankly unprofessional from a town government perspective. There is no official process or policy that outlines how a resident should go about submitting a bylaw amendment for consideration, so we approached the Bylaw Committee to begin the conversation. It was also sent to the Charter Committee for their consideration as they review and discuss town government structure and operations. The Bylaw Committee Chair invited and encouraged us to attend the upcoming meeting on April tenth to present and discuss our proposal. We were informed without notice that the proposal would be discussed at the Charter Committee meeting on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, thus not affording us an opportunity to prepare and present our proposal to the Charter Committee in person. It is my understanding that the Finance Committee is calling for a meeting to discuss the proposal. The proposal and all of our research documentation was not sent to the Finance Committee, so I am unsure how they acquired any material with which to have a discussion. We also have not received any request by the Finance Committee to attend and present at any meeting where our proposal will be discussed. The fact that we as residents have submitted a proposal for a bylaw amendment and have not been afforded the consideration of formally presenting it before it's discussed by any town committee or board is unfair and inconsiderate. Assumptions are made and misinformation spread with no opportunity for us to speak to the reasoning behind the proposal. I encourage the board to consider creating a formal public process for residents to use when submitting bylaw amendment proposals, inclusive of steps for resident submission as well as the process the town should follow, similar to the recently posted zoning bylaw amendment process. I would also respectfully request the board, please ask other committees not to discuss the proposal until it has been presented by us in a public meeting setting and all materials are publicly accessible.
Thank you. I was at the Charter Committee meeting, um, on Thursday. We received the information Thursday midday, so I hadn't actually seen it until that night. Um, and we did talk about, or it had come to my attention that through the new bylaws that we as a town adopted a couple early year ago, did not outline a process for which public, um, consideration, public, um, could submit, clearly outline a process for which public could submit bylaw change requests. So, um, that's something that I would like to add, Jen, to your point, to future kind of policy outline process. Um, I do think that as anything, for any public knowledge, I believe as soon as committee members or chairs are notified of it, um, it goes that way. When I had seen it, I had asked if it was because it, it was posted for the Charter Committee as an, a discussion point, I had asked if, um, the two petitioners, Jen Yu and Tamika, were made aware of it, as well as if FinCom was made aware of it and Moderator was made aware of it as well. Um, because if we were gonna talk about it, I felt that it was only fair that everybody was, was there. But that was.
And I, I might respectfully note that, again, we sent it the day before the Charter Committee, so it couldn't actually properly be posted to discuss during that agenda. So it's, i- in my opinion, it, it wasn't actually on the agenda and we were not afforded enough opportunity or notice to be able to speak to it.
I think the agendas for a lot of the things are, um, very broad and that's definitely a consideration going forward for, you know, all boards and committees to either keep them broad and as information comes in, um, we sometimes hear, um, discuss things that we have had general topics of, but the more minutia comes in. Um, so I hear your concern. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Moving into communication, member comments, announcements, and town administrator updates. Um, I just wanted to say we're into almost April. Tomorrow's April Fool's Day. Um, and that spring sports are ba- are starting up and it's countdown to graduation for Wachusett and Bay Path as well as the other high schools. Um, so just be mindful of the, the activities that kind of come along with, uh, high school graduation. Um, I think the schools had put out, or a group had put out a note about the, um, senior assassin game that usually starts with Wachusett, um, s- high school students, the seniors. And so just, um, for the public to be mindful that that may be, I'm not sure what the dates are for that to start yet. Um, the board, as I'm sure, um, many people have heard, the board received communication from the town administrator with, um, his intent to not renew his contract, um, which has an expiration of April third, twenty twenty-six. So that's a one-year out notice. Um, with the, uh, also commentary in the letter that, um, he would be pursuing, actively pursuing other opportunities, but that it would be, uh, he was committed to fulfilling his responsibility through his contract or until and unless, uh, there was mutually agreed upon, um, date other than that between the administrator and the board. Um, the c- communication, um, has gone to the department heads and asked for that to be sent to appropriate staff as well. Um, we as a board have not yet spoke, talked about it. We have an executive session tonight for that, um, process with the administrator. And so I just want to put it out there that we're aware of it for all of our purposes. Um, the town administrator is still our town administrator. He has committed to, to fulfilling those duties as mentioned until or unless there's mutually agreed upon transition. Um, we're obviously in the thick of budget season and coming up to town meeting. Um, and as the town administrator that has been here for all of that, um, it's my personal hope and I think the best for the board that that relationship continues and is, um, uh, maintains the, the strength and cohesion there as well. Um, so that is, um, what I have for member comments. Do any other board members have comments?
I would, I would like to say, um, a hearty thank you to the Events Committee for all of their efforts yesterday for the townwide, um, look see and come to see the departments and come to shake hands and, uh, find out just what the town is all about. And it went over very well. I was very impressed with the amount of people that came through there. And so, yes, you know, um, a good shout out for them. Also, I'd like to take a moment and kind of get a little bit personal and say thank you to Tamaka and to Rose, who works for the Cable Committee. They put together a working schedule that we can depend on and it's just something that I think needs to be pointed out that finally, you know, we have something that really looks nice and I commend the both of them for their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments about the events, the, the sh- events expo yesterday because I've, I wasn't able to attend because I was at Dance Comp, but I heard great things about it from the community, so.
It was. It was, it wa- I think it was well, well put together. It was well organized. Um, I ate refreshments into next week sometime, but at any rate, no, it was, it was really something that was ve- very well put together, very well constructed. People answered the questions. People came in, they asked questions, they wanted to know about this, they wanted to know about that and so on and so forth. So, yeah, you know, it, it turned out to be, I think, a very good day overall. I went outside and walked around to talk to the fire department, the police department, dispatches. And I spent about a half an hour outside in the rain and the cold. And when I walked inside, I thought I'd never thaw out again. But at any rate, those people who are out there standing around and under tents and whatnot, um, they deserve a, a little bit of an extra thank you too because, um, they were out there and the weather was just not that great. So thank you to them as well.
Austin, do you have town administrator?
I do, thank you. Um, just to, um, leave comment about, uh, the board's announcement regarding me. Um, my decision is entirely personal and, um, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of it as soon as possible to have discussions, um, to talk about the next steps. Um, I've appreciated the opportunity here. I think there's been a lot of great things that have been accomplished over just, just about two years here. Lot more work to do. Um, I mentioned to department heads at staff meeting. I'm, um, disappointed how this is ending and, uh, but I'm very proud of all the work that they've done on behalf of the community, on behalf of the board. So I appreciate, um, your confidence and the previous board's confidence in selecting me here. I do think that someone else is a better fit for this position and I have confidence and optimism that the town will be successful, uh, throughout the search process and with your next administrator. Just a few comments. Um, the board, uh, may be aware and members of the community may be aware. Uh, Governor Healy signed on Friday, uh, legislation to extend remote meeting authorizations that, uh, have been present during COVID nineteen. Uh, the extension is until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. It's not the permanent, um, authorization that, uh, we all have been looking for. I think, uh, that the state legislature will, will still try to do something there, but the, uh, authorization was actually set to expire today. Uh, that's been extended, uh, until June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, the board and the community are aware, there's a meeting on Thursday in the Blair Room regarding, um, potential changes to our dispatch, regional dispatch district governance model. This is responsive to a select board goal to establish and convert, um, our current hosted model where Rut- Rutland is the lead community for, uh, five-town regional dispatch. To convert that to district model where all five towns, um, you know, essentially have ownership of, of the operation. Um, this will result in, you know, some streamlined governance processes for the district, for the service, and also, um, you know, better cost sharing, um, for some of the things that Rutland, because we're the lead community, we just cover because we're the lead community. Um, and, you know, quite frankly, this is an expansion opportunity. We have five or six communities that we've met with that they're waiting to join, but they need the district model. That's what they want. Um, this also allows us, uh, to get a new facility. State nine-one-one has been very active in these discussions. They'll be in attendance on, on Thursday as well. Um, and also representatives from the Collins Center who, um, uh, completed a feasibility study um, to, uh, examine this conversion. They'll also be there to present their reports and findings. And Dispatch Director Michael Moriarty will also be there to talk about operational and technical questions that, uh, the select boards and the community may have. You know, really, there's no changes to the operation. It's just a governance model, um, because we're already regional. A lot of times when these presentations take place, they're converting to a regional, but we've already done, we've been doing that since the eighties. Um, so we've demonstrated that. But surely, I'm sure there'll be questions and, and Thursday will be an opportunity to answer, um, those questions. Uh, and finally, uh, the Planning Department with assistance from Tamika launched a, a survey to examine, uh, rezoning opportunities on Route sixty-eight. I believe that was launched this weekend at the, uh, at the event here at the library. Um, and I think that goes, when until, John, the election?
The twelfth.
Twelve?
Four p.m. on the twelfth.
Okay. Um, I think they've received, you know, a lot of responses already, so I think everyone who's responded. Um, this is, uh, you know, the first of many opportunities to talk about rezoning and economic development opportunities here in Rutland. Um, I think, you know, future events will, will, maybe a public forum will be hosted to provide the results of this survey, um, with the Planning Board and Economic Development Office, uh, to further receive community feedback on this. So just wanted to thank Tamika and John for their work on that. And that's all I have for updates tonight.
Is the, um, does Route sixty-eight survey online? Is it?
Yes.
And it's on the homepage as well as the planning board or?
Nope, so the news and announcement is going out tomorrow morning as well as a social media post. Today, we focused on sending out, uh, targeted emails. It is on the planner's page, excuse me, the Planning and Community Development page on the website. Um, so if anybody wanted to access it now, uh, there's also, and I, John, I, I don't mean to step on your toes if you have anything to add. Um, we also included a link where you could print a paper copy, if you prefer to paper copy, to the electronic and it, and John included instructions on how to turn it back in.
We, I delivered copies to the senior center today. I have copies in the Annex Town Hall tomorrow, bring some to the library and over to the public safety building. And as of five o'clock today, we've received almost a hundred and thirty responses in one day. So it's really outstanding and that's before the email blast goes out and Tamika reached out to the schools. So it's gonna be a big response, which is great. And so far, it's mostly positive. So that's a good sign.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you both for working on that. Um, do any other board members have questions or anything for the administrator? Hearing none, moving into appointments and resignations. We have a Conservation Commission letter of interest to serve from George Farrington. Um, included in our pack is, uh, Mr. Farrington's volunteer application form, um, speaking to his, um, interests and expertise as well as a letter from, um, Tamika on behalf of the Conservation Commission um, that at their previous March eighteenth meeting, the members of the Conservation Commission unanimously recommended the appointment of George, the vacancy. Um, I don't know if you recall, the board calls, there was, I believe, one vacancy when Peter Crane resigned. Um, and so this appointment would make that a full board again. It's my recollection. And we have here, um, George is here and Brian, I think, is the vice chair. No, you're an.
I'm just a commissioner.
Yeah. And I believe the chair is, um.
Melissa.
Mo- right, but I'm not sure that she's available right now.
Correct.
So, um, does anyone have any questions or anything for George or, um, Brian as a commissioner?
Uh, through the chair?
Yep.
Mr. Farrington. I, I see here, uh, and by the way, thanks for applying for this position.
Oh, no problem.
We don't get a lot, so appreciate that. Um, I see here that you went to school for this?
I did go to school for environmental science at UMass Victoria.
And how does that, and may sound like a stupid question, forgive me on my part if it is, how does the environmental science apply to the CONCON committee? How do you see your services working on that? I got a, a lot of stuff here that you mentioned about it and a lot of it seems to be of trying to get people interested in con- in conservation, all that. But how does the other part of the expertise apply to your being on the board and making those decisions? I mean, how much of, have you been on CONCON meetings? Have you been to them?
I've been to a few of them, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, to be, uh, transparent, I didn't finish school. Um, I stud- I was a real smart fella and dropped out with, uh, a semester to go. Uh, but I did study environmental science and I focused in, um, geology. Uh, so I have a very good understanding, um, despite not having the piece of paper. I have a very good understanding of natural drainage systems, hydrology, uh, and things of that nature. I also, I mean, it was in the construction side of things, but I also spent sixteen years in the granite business, um, where I helped educate consumers on, uh, you know, what granite really is as opposed to what it's not. So I think, um, I think I would rely a lot on my colleagues, um, to help guide. I don't think I would be the sole, you know, I know I'm not gonna be the sole decision maker. Um, but I definitely think I could contribute to these decisions in a meaningful way, sure.
Um, do you feel that the Conservation Commission should be a marketing outreach for CONCON?
Do I think it should be a marketing outreach?
Yeah, you mentioned in here about, you know, uh, educating people and doing trails and, and other stuff.
To an extent, I think it should be, yeah. Because conservation is a lot more than just putting hay bales around some wetlands. Um, you know, to prevent, to prevent runoff. Conservation is about conserving things in the environment and learning how to do that. And it starts early. It starts with educating children. I know that I believe it's, uh, overlook is doing stuff with the schools. Um, so to bring in and work with, partner with them and talk about the importance of native plants and things like that to educate the kids. Um, because conservation is not something that one single person can do. You know, it's great if I plant a whole bunch of native plants in my yard, but it's a whole, you know, the more the merrier. That's, that's, that's the saying. So to, to, do I think there should be a, uh, do I think it should be a marketing campaign for conservation? No, I think it has its role, though, sure.
Okay. Okay. Um, what's your position on open space?
I'm a member.
Yeah, I, what I mean is, let me clarify. If, we, we come up all the time with open space that, does the town buy it or do we let it go? And if the town doesn't have the money or it doesn't have a viable place in the system that we can use that land for other than just letting it sit there, what would be your, I mean, how would you look at open space? Cause we're gonna be making a recommendation from the, the, the committee in regards to open space if it ever comes up. So I'm trying to feel what your position would be on that.
Okay, um. Again, I'm gonna be transparent. I am, uh, uh, as of last week, a ten-year brain tumor, brain injury survivor.
Okay.
So if you could kind of rephrase the question, cause I genuinely didn't catch it all. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, you're, if we vote you in, you're gonna be part of the committee.
Yes, sir.
So we have a piece of open land comes up. How would you look at that as a piece for the town? In other words, would you look at what it can be used for? The viability of it, the cost of it, or that is not in your purview?
Oh, no, of course I'd look for, I'd wanna, I'd wanna know, I'd wanna, I'd wanna look at all the potential uses for, for sure.
Okay.
I mean, if it's, if it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a piece of land that, you know, may have vernal pools or, or, you know, contain some sort of, you know, rare species or something like that, yeah. rare species or something like that. Yeah, sure, there needs to be some type of, some type of investigation into that, but n- n- no, I I mean, I'm not, I'm not a.
You're not a hardliner on just buying open space?
No, no. I, because quite frankly, the town needs businesses. You know, it doesn't need any more houses. It needs businesses to 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 offset the tax base. So, you know, we we were just talking about the the proposal for um Route sixty-eight and the rezoning. Yeah, I certainly wanna know all about that.
Okay.
Uh because I think that would be good for the community.
I appreciate that. Thank you for.
No problem.
Thank you for your transparency.
I, you know, you have to be.
Sure, thank you.
Austin, can you just monitor the chat? Cause Tom said he can't talk, I think, so he would put stuff in the chat if he had anything. Thank you. Um is there any other questions or comments or anything for George?
Sure, um not really a question, but I just reading through your your application, I just wanted to say thank you for um including all of your um support of uh accessibility, inclusion, community preservation and your community outreach. I think those are all, those are all really big things in your application that are, I also agree with and I'm, you know, glad that you brought them up and see them as important things for for this, so I'm.
Thank you.
Support of all of that.
And I I really do think that would be my biggest, one of my bigger contributions to this commission is um my expertise in community outreach. I've spent uh ten years now as an advocate for the brain tumor, brain injury communities. Um I've sat on four panels for the congressionally-directed peer-reviewed rare cancer research project. I I I've advocated on a local, state and federal level. So uh community outreach is kind of my thing. So I I I think I could really, a- a- as well as accessibility. Um as someone who became disabled later in life, uh I have a very unique lens on accessibility. I know what I thought was accessible before my brain injury and I certainly know what's accessible now. Uh and I like to be able to bring those two worlds um together, so. Thank you.
Certainly need more community outreach and community involvement, so.
Thank you.
Any other?
Okay.
John, oh, good, thank you. Paul, do you have anything?
No, I'm good with the way he wrote it up and the way, the ways you explained it, yeah.
Thank you for the application and your willingness to to join and serve.
Thank you.
Um and I would entertain a motion um if the board is so moved to appoint George Farrington to the conservation commission to serve until the expiration of the seat, which is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So this would just be a a short appointment and then up for potential renewal in the um for the next fiscal year.
Sure.
I will move to appoint Judge Farrington to the conservation committee to serve until the expiration of the seat in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation?
He voted yay.
Okay. Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's a night.
Let's try. We have a yay from Tom and uh Whitman, I. Thank you. You'll need to go to um the town clerk's office to get sworn in.
Sure.
Um I believe uh their hours are eight to four thirty, four o'clock, four thirty. Um and then if that doesn't work, you can just email Ben or Tamika.
I'm training for FALM. If I can walk up and down, all the walking I can do, I can, I can, I can, I'll take.
So I think conservation meets tomorrow night, right? So if you are sworn in tomorrow before the meeting, then you can attend and participate in in the meeting.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Thanks, guys. And I think you guys have our planning, uh potential big night tonight. Is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, do you wanna do a quick plug while you're here for that?
Sure, we're um, so some of the first warm rainy nights in the spring um is when some of our most vulnerable species migrate to their breeding grounds. Uh so tonight's the first warm rain we've had in a very long time. Um so we'll be going out meeting on uh Campbell Street um at eight o'clock to try to educate some kids, you know, about the amphibian migrations, invernal pools. Uh we tried this two weeks ago at the same spot, but it turned out to be thirty-four degrees and then nothing was really happening. But we had thirty or forty kids there, so the turnout was amazing. So we're hoping they all come back out tonight and CONCON can do some of this, you know, outreach. Um we also took part in the expo yesterday. We had a huge turnout uh at the CONCON booth and um kids are really excited about the educational events that we're starting up, so.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you.
Is, excuse me, is there a particular spot you're gonna be doing that?
We're gonna be at the corner of Crestview and Campbell tonight.
Okay, yep, okay.
But.
At eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock, so. But it's gonna be happening, you know, everywhere. Everywhere there's low-lying, you know, vernal pools and wetlands.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um you guys are more than welcome to stick around, but if you wanna go, that's fine as well. Go get ready for your eight o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Um moving into old business, um we have, actually, I wanna see, sorry, who else is here? Um if the board is amenable to taking the road acceptance po- John, is that why you are here for the road acceptance policy?
Yes.
If the board's amenable to taking the road acceptance policy out of order, um since we have the planner here for that, um is the board okay with that?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um John, do you want to, you and Austin wanna talk about it or?
Sure. Um thank you for taking this out of order. This is something that's been in the works for a few months now. Um I didn't wanna present it to the select board until it's been through the review of other entities. Um this has been through town council review, Quinn engineering review, planning board review and also DPW review. So this draft incorporates uh comments from all of those entities and this is the, this is the last stop because this would, this is, this would be a select board policy. So um hearing that um the board, it doesn't have a road acceptance policy, never has. Um we went through this last fall. Um a lot of roads have been presented to town meeting um late in the process and um put on the town meeting warrant when they probably weren't really ready to be put on the town meeting warrant. And um everyone has to scramble and promises are made by developers that things are gonna be done by a certain time. And ultimately, that can lead to, you know, a rash decision at town meeting when the roadway isn't really ready. So um I surveyed various communities. Um you can see some of the results in the table on page one. Um most of the content here is pretty boil-the-plate language. The most important thing is the timeline. And so you can see there are, there are communities that require the process to start two or three months in advance, some six months in advance, some up to seven or ten months in advance. Seeing as this would be the first such policy that Rutland has, I thought four months was a, was a um an adequate timeframe and the planning board agreed. Um this, the purpose of this is to give the time for the select board to have town council review the legal documentation related to roadway acceptance, such as the meets and bounds descriptions and the layout plan to make sure that what the town is accepting is legally acceptable and consistent with what was approved by the planning board. That would be the first step when they come to the select board to request to have a roadway layout for acceptance. The the select board then makes a non-binding rec- uh reference, referral back to the planning board and planning board uh makes a recommendation back to the select board. And that's where Quinn engineering would become involved. Quinn engineering would do a review as far as the progress of the work on the roadway compared to, again, what was approved by the subdivision. So that's when the engineering comes in and then they would present a letter back to the planning board to help inform their uh their recommendation. So um I know last fall, subroadways were presented, but Quinn engineering was contacted. I believe their response was, it wasn't even far enough along to consider a punch list. I believe, for instance, sidewalk construction had not even begun yet. So um so that would allow the select board and the planning board to see where the roadway stands and if the, if the roadways are far enough along to consider acceptance. So that's what this policy would do. It would, it would make, it would make developers begin the process a minimum of four months in advance of town meeting. So in a May town meeting, they would have to start the process right after the new year. Um for a fall town meeting, they would have to start that process, basically, I believe. Um so November would be July.
November, summer, yeah.
Yeah, they'd have to start about July first, starting the new fiscal year. So that works out pretty well. And like I said, um it just gives the town in general enough time to take a look at these roadway proposals and make sure the roadway is ready to present to town meeting. Because I'm not a big fan of placeholder articles for things like this, cause I've seen it in other communities where there's that pressure when it's on the warrant. And this happened in Rantham, for example, where a roadway, roadway was accepted with a punch list of things left to do. Once the town accepts that road, that's the leverage. Because what ends up happening is with these subdivisions that take sometimes ten, fifteen years to construct, the bond that may be held in certain towns is not enough. Um there was one instance where the remaining roadway work out of a small cul-de-sac in Rantham was, the remaining work was about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Well, the bond was only about forty thousand dollars. So therefore, the developer has no incentive to finish the roadway. He said, fine, take my bond. It's, you know, it's not gonna even pay to finish the roadway. So this really gives the town time to review and leverage before something goes on the warrant to make sure it's ready before it gets accepted.
Thank you. Um it says, I had a couple of questions in reading through the um policy and um for, under the process on, I think it's the third page, um part F for fees. Um it just says applicant will, shall reimburse the town for fees incurred by the town during the layout and acceptance process. This may include, but not limited to, the cost of legal advertisement for the public hearing and any necessary butter notifications. Alternatively, the applicant could be asked to provide a certified check in an amount sufficient the select board's discretion to cover the town's engineering, engineering, legal and related fees. Applicant shall reimburse or supplement all acceptance fees from time to time and when requested, to ensure that the town is fully reimbursed for all associated costs.
Mm-hmm.
Is this generally how this is worded or is there generally a more solid dollar amount that then would be reviewed um?
It's difficult. It depends on the scope of the project.
Yeah.
Some of this is covered by their um their peer review fifty-three G account. Obviously, the planning board's side of it would actually be covered by that fund because that fund stays active until the project is completed and then what's left over gets returned to the developer. So this is additional costs that are incurred. Um you know, town council has to review the documents to make sure they're, they're legally acceptable. If you have additional review that needs to be done outside of the planning board, that's what this would cover. And it's really difficult to put a set dollar amount and um, you know, I I know that, you know, the the planning board is talking about adding a fee for site plan review and that's one of the conversations that come up. For instance, with legal advertisements, how that cost has changed over the years. So it's really tough to come up with a specific dollar amount, so that's why this is worded generally.
Okay, that was, I mean, I think that we, this is one of the things we run into kind of across the board is that as fees are constantly changing or the, you know, cost of, you know, cost of doing business is changing, how frequently do we need to review our fee schedule and everything? Um but I just wanted to make sure that it was documented in such a manner that it's known that this is the expectation and it's not like, well, if we feel like doing it, we will or whatever.
Right. And and like I said, it depends because you could have a long roadway that's being proposed and the other review, the review would be more extensive than a small cul-de-sac. So it, it's, it's worded generally, so it accommodates both of those.
Well, maybe if I may add, uh when John and I had spoken about it, there, most of the time, the street acceptance requests that we get are for active subdivisions that have active fifty-three G accounts. Um but there are times, technically, any private road could be brought to the town to ask for acceptance. Um and I think the most recent example is Nate's Way. Um it had a fifty-three G account way, way back in the day, but it had long been closed. And we didn't have any way to recoup those funds. Unfortunately, uh the developer that we worked with was very willing to pay back the fees. Um but we had nothing in writing that required it. So that was kind of why John had worded it in a general manner in case there wasn't a fifty-three G to cover it.
So the town was lucky that the developer was amenable to that.
Yes.
But I don't think all developers were willing to do that.
Through the chair?
Sure.
Uh John, uh as kind of a follow-up to Leah's question. You know, in the same section F.
Mm-hmm.
Alternatively, the applicant could be asked to provide a certified check in an amount sufficient in the select board's discretion to cover the town's engineering, legal and related fees. Is that something we have to do or is that something you do or do, when it says?
No, this, this would be something you would do because, yeah, cause the process is such, Harry, where the most, most of the process for road acceptance is with the select board.
Right.
The select, it begins with the select board, the select board refers it to the planning board. The planning board's role in this is simply having Quinn engineering review it to make sure that the punch list items are done and that things are consistent with when they improved. And then it comes back to the select board to actually hold the hearing, to actually finish the process and create a warrant article to put it out for town meeting. So it's, it's, two-thirds of the process is with the select board. So to Tamika's point, um you know, it could be a private way that's being requested for acceptance. In that case, that may not even be a roadway that came before the planning board at any point. It may be a very old roadway. Um so that would be a unique situation. So um this would be a situation where, like Tamika said, we might not have a fifty-three account. We probably wouldn't have a fifty-three G account. So we would need to recoup those costs somehow. And I believe that the, the cost should be on the developer if they would like the roadway accepted because I think town council has gr- given us an opinion that um the town is not obliged to accept any roadway, even if it's built to town standards. So I think, I think it's fair to have the developer um provide those costs.
The developer or the residents or whomever is, the the petitioner essentially, right?
Correct. Yes.
Right? Like I think most, in most cases in town, it's generally a developer. But there are ins- a a couple instances where I know sometimes the developer tries to recruit residents and have it go that way.
Right.
Um alternatively, so.
Oh, what question? So when the plan is being devised or whatever, you're come, you're gonna come to the select board and say, we think we should have, we need a check of sixty thousand dollars.
I, I wouldn't do that.
Cause I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the select board gets involved in the amount of money that is sufficient to cover those fees.
For instance, when an applicant comes to you in the case, say it's not a subdivision, say it's a private roadway, then you would get, you know, like the planning board does, we get a quote from engineering, Quinn engineering. How much is this, that's how, I think that's how we um base, you know, base our, base our cost. Um they give us an estimate as far as how much their scope of work is gonna cost.
Okay.
And then we replenish it as needed. Same thing here. You could, you could ask town council for an estimate as far as how many hours it may take them to review the legal documents and the layout plan just to um give an opinion back to the board. And then their hours would be, you know, say it's, it cost, it, they spent ten hours doing it at X amount of dollars per hour. Then the um, the applicant would be obliged to reimburse the town at the board's discretion.
So have the amount of money that was requested to cover those expenses been enough that we haven't run into a deficit?
I'm trying to think. I don't, I don't know if we've ever done this. This is the first time we've had this policy, so this is new.
Oh.
This is new, so.
I think thus far, if I may, I think thus far, yeah, Tamika, you probably have handled more of these. But I think thus far, if we get an applica- um like a petition to lay out the ways, then it's the select board piece is on the cost of town. Um and that's including, you know, the legal review as well as the legal notices and the butter notices and everything.
Right.
The town general fund is absorbing that, so all of our residents are are doing that currently.
Right.
What, when it gets, so it would come to the select board to say, we would consider laying out the ways, we would consider it, send it to planning board for review, then it would come, planning board would be covered generally in most cases from a fifty-three G account.
Correct.
In most of our cases, but it doesn't.
Ninety-nine percent.
It doesn't have to be because we may have some that don't have a fifty, an active fifty-three G account. At that point, it would be coming out again of either a revolving fund or a town general fund. Um and then it would come back to select board to decide to place it as a warrant article. We would do the public hearing to place it as a warrant article or not based on the feedback from planning board and the engineering and and everything and, you know, the public hearing piece as well.
And town council would review the warrant auto- article to make sure it was accurate for the acceptance that was happening. So, Harry, um we ran into this in the town of Wareham where the planning board, actually, the um, the cost of legal advertisements for projects that can but come before the planning board was actually out of the general fund. Only town I've ever seen that did that. And they stopped doing it because you, you know, they, they would put, say, two thousand dollars aside for legal advertisements. But you don't know how many projects the planning board's gonna receive in a year. So constantly, they'd be requesting more funding, more funding, more funding. So that's why, you know, this, this is um, this is general, but it allows flexibility depending on the scope of the project where. So that's why, you know, this this is um this is general, but it allows flexibility depending on the scope of the project where. We're not putting a set amount aside where we might end up having to request more money, so again, this is flexible for the town. And it's also flexible for the developer because no two projects create equal. You know, if you have a very long roadway that's being accepted, yeah, the cost is gonna be a little bit more than if a short roadway is being accepted.
I I I understand what you're saying, I guess, I think from a perspective of remedy. If it costs more than what they gave us a check for. How do we remedy that situation, do we not put, does the select board say pay up or we don't put it on the warrant? What's the remedy for that?
It could be, ask for more, yeah, ask for more.
So I if if I may, so that would be the responsibility of our office to make sure that we're collecting payment on everything. For example, what I did most recently, because we didn't have policy in place was. Um I had the vendors provide me with the invoice and then I had the developer directly pay those vendors. So that we weren't taking the money into the general fund, but then having to take it from a select board account. So he paid them and we did not move on with the next steps until I confirmed with like Kevin Quinn that he had been paid and I confirmed with town council that they had been paid.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Harry, this fifty three G account works that way where it's actually a master in the law where.
Okay.
Um failure of a developer to replenish the fifty three G account can be a basis for denial by the planning board of a project.
Okay.
Um so, you know, we had this case with Bryce Lemon. Their account just got down to about six hundred dollars and I had to email uh the developer and say, listen, you need to replenish this or. Quinn's not doing any more reviews and you're gonna be at a standstill.
Okay.
Had to check in the next day, so um it's it's their responsibility to replenish.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear, okay. Thanks.
Thank you and thank you, John, for all the work that you and planning and Quinn and DPW and and legal and everyone has done. Um yeah, no, I was gonna say, I see Jen, you have a couple, I'm not sure if Paul and Carol, I do see you have, but I'm.
Um I and I can't remember, have we always done these at annual town meeting or do we have them at special town meeting too?
I think they've occurred at special town meeting and annual.
You can.
Done both, okay, and there's no concern with that?
Yeah.
I know we always talk about how we don't want bylaws at special town meeting because of the attendance, we don't think that this is.
I think some of the, I think for me personally, and I I've I've made this clear for.
Same.
The bylaw stuff also, I think we have for all intents and purposes, we have two town meetings a year, they're in our bylaws that we have two town meetings a year, so.
Mm-hmm.
We need to kind of be able to do work at both um. And so I know sometimes. For the road acceptance, they wanna get it in before the winter, obviously, and they can get stuff done in the spring. They might not be able to make the spring because it's early enough, so I personally am okay with both um fall or. S- um the May as long as.
If the process is followed and the proper review happens and the roadway is truly ready.
They're gonna go.
That's yeah.
Normally roadway acceptances are not controversial or time consuming. It's basically the process leading up to it, if it's done the right way, then the roadway should be ready and it shouldn't be controversial to accept the roadway.
Um and then my other question, which you kind of touched on already, is obviously one of the most important things for me is making sure that all the conditions have been met.
Yeah.
Um I know that's mentioned in here multiple times and there's one section. Uh two, part of two B towards the end where you've got. Um that the applicant's responsible for completing any remaining items and for correcting any issues at its sole expense. I just wanted to. What if, is there a timeline, like when do they have to have that done in order for this to continue?
Before it goes on the warrant, in my opinion, because for instance, a lot of these subdivisions, especially the large ones that are going on.
Okay.
That happen in phases and they take several years. You could have binder course of pavement is normally good for three to five years, but sometimes they're down for longer.
Yep.
So what happens is when they're ready for when they're ready for acceptance in the top coat. There's some repair that needs to happen to the binder course before they even do the finish coat or else it's not gonna be any good. Um when I when I was in Rainham and there was a cul-de-sac to be accepted, I actually went out with the. Peer review engineer and we witnessed core hole samples to make sure that the depth of the binder course was appropriate, so. Um that would be before it gets to this point, they need to do any repairs to the binder course. Any curbing that's been damaged during the during the course of construction, Cape Cod, berm, granite curbing, whatever. Everything needs to be in place and everything needs to be repaired and in good condition before the town accepts it.
Okay, is that any anything to consider adding that that has to be done prior to?
That would that would normally be the what the the planning board engineering review. That would come out during then cuz he goes out and inspects and he would expect the he would inspect the binder course, he would inspect those things, he does reviews along the way.
Okay. Yep.
So I think I think that's normally part of the process.
Okay, no, I just mean like, is it any to have it a little bit more formally stated that if the conditions haven't been met by the time that the warrant is. Closed, if you will, but I'm not sure the right timing of it. That that's like.
If you wanna put in, that's fine, I'm not sure it's necessary because in the case of the 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 request that was just submitted.
Or even.
You know, the the obviously, the warrant closes on the tenth and so um. The time is just most likely not gonna be there to process this before the town meeting, so I tend to think those things take care of themselves.
Okay.
Um you know, if you if you want to add that in there, we can, but um I'm not sure it's necessary because again, that you know. The planning board will, you know, Quinn will review it, the planning board, if the planning board doesn't recommend laying it out, that that'll be the report back to the select board.
And the only reason why I ask is and similar to, you know, some of the other questions, some of the other questions I had is um. It as you noted in the past, these have gone through when the conditions have not been on.
Okay.
On the. You know. Yes, we'll get it done, just accept it and then they never do it, so is there, you know, the planning board can have the best intentions.
Right. Right.
To to make sure that checklist is complete, but. Uh to me, it's it seems like it would be a little bit better to have something specifically stating. If it's not done and you haven't proven that it's done, it doesn't get on the warrant.
Okay.
Just so that that's.
Jen, I think to your point, I I agree and I think that historically, that's fallen to the select board that has ultimately decided, well. We have the report from planning board that this punch list isn't done and whether they think it may or may not be done, but then it's ultimately on the select board. Um to determine if they. Want to place it with the hope of it being, you know, and previous boards, I think, had been and and those were the contentious ones at town meetings.
Right.
Sometimes they were voted to not be approved because even at town meeting, there was still outstanding issues.
Right. Yeah.
Um so I do think that it's on the select board as far as placing the warrant article or not, I don't know if we want to explicitly put it in there.
I I I um I just don't wanna get so ultra-specific, that's my fear to unintentionally create a loophole.
Then even in here, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And make it so specific, I wanna leave a little bit of flexibility in there to give you guys some leeway.
Right, right.
And and not put some specific language cuz I may not be even thinking about it at this point until I put it in there and then then I may look at and say, oh my god, this could happen.
Yeah.
And it may not be until months down the road, so um. Like I said, if you feel strong, if the board feels strongly about putting in and I can put it in, but um you know. I prefer to keep a little bit of generality because it gives it gives the board and the planning board some some leeway in that case.
As long as somebody's asking those questions, then that's that's really what I'm I'm after.
Yeah.
And I will say, in my experience, kind of being on the board with since we've had a town planner on staff, it's been less of an issue because the planner has kind of pushed. Um both Dave and John have both kind of pushed like, hey, this isn't ready, like, you know, we we have the punch list and.
Right.
Ultimately, it's your political decision if you're gonna place it or not, but.
Yeah.
You know, um and so I think that that's and that's, like I said, just to reiterate, the contentious ones at town meeting typically are the ones that do have an outstanding punch list. Um and there is always the risk that they'll still pass it at town meeting and it won't go through, but the contentious ones have had a lot of conversation.
But you're right, more and more towns have been. Um for lack of a better term, burned by accepting roadways that aren't ready. Um in that case, in Rantham, we had to have meetings with the residents on the roadway because the binder course had been down for so long. There were weeds this high growing through cracks in it and the developer, again, he took the attitude of, fine, go ahead and take my bond, so. It was a delicate negotiation to get him to finish the roadway so the town didn't have to, but we the town had to bend a little bit. And you know, waive a couple things that they thought they could live without, but it wasn't an ideal situation at all, but it did get done.
Yeah.
But there were some things that were waived by the town that were originally not waived, that the town decided, okay. This is not, they they boiled it down to what was essential, like handicap landings and accessibility and curbing. And they waived like a couple of fire department things that the fire department agreed were not essential, but you don't wanna be put in that situation.
Right. Um and then I, if it's in here, I apologize, some of the legal jargon. Guess me, but I again, having situations where we're asking, we're being asked to accept pieces of a road.
Right.
Can we just disallow that completely, that the entire road has to be?
That's 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 a que- that's gonna be a question for legal, I'm not sure. Um you know, so um. I mean, certainly, uh we could have town council weigh in on that. Um. You know, it's always the you know, it's always the the case of, especially with these large subdivisions, sometimes a portion of a roadway has to be accepted. Before the next phase can commence, so um that's that's a tricky one, um that's one thing that I'd have to reach out to town council about about that. My my sense is that the answer would not be black or white.
Yeah.
Most likely, um you know, again, um a developer has the right has the right to petition the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um for a roadway acceptance, I think. That type of thing would probably be on a case by case basis, depending on the situation, unfortunately.
If it, oh, so go ahead and say, if it can't be done, is it something where, you know, as they continue to do construction, it could be built into site conditions that if there's any. Distraction to the existing roadway that they're responsible for it, okay, as long as we have some recourse for them to, you know, take care of any damage that they're.
Absolutely, yep, I've seen that put into decisions, yeah, yeah.
Causing on the other.
Yeah, I was just having a conversation with a planning board member today, Keith Tutolo came in and. Um we were talking about the frustration of when you have a large subdivision that is approved in phases and then the developer. Starts construction, doesn't necessarily follow the order of that phase, what's the remedy for the town? I'd like to have a conversation with town council about that because um that is that is an issue.
I was gonna say, I thought, and I may be misspeaking, but I think some of it was depending on how the subdivision rules and regs are set up for a particular subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Whether that is um. Conditioned that a a a certain certain portion of the road has to be accepted before this next phase can start, I think there is some flexibility there as far as how the.
Yes. Yeah.
The subdivision rules and regs for that project are are done.
Yeah, the conditions because every subdivision is different, so it could depend on the topography. It could, you know, has to go in certain order depending on the topography or the access from one road or the other. Where, okay, we would like this access to be put in first for. A a certain reason, so yeah, it's it's project specific.
But I think, and I just wanna follow up on Jen's piece about holding the the developer or any other develop like construction. In check for the wear and tear on existing accepted roads, whether it's a continuation of a phased project or new projects.
Right.
Because I think we are a, we are still a heavily construction he- heavy town.
Right.
And the wear and tear that the developers um put in on on existing roadways, town roadways. For um a lot of the construction work that they're doing is detrimental and at. Uh at an added expense to to the community and I don't think that that's.
More more and more towns are getting stricter with acceptance of roadways of large large subdivisions because of that. Because, okay, we're gonna accept this roadway, but then truck traffic is going to beat this up for the next three years as this as the. Phase two and three on the subdivision go forward and a lot of towns are starting to take the the stance of, okay, we're not accepting this until it's completely done. So if that's something that Rutland wants to move towards, we could certainly do that, I can have that conversation with the planning board.
And I think it's not necessarily only a road acceptance policy, but an existing road, like, you know, we see the Briton all estates and the the grizzly drop, the grizzly. Neighborhood con- conversations happening with planning board, right, and the the wear and tear for big construction projects and so.
Yeah.
We had that with Charnock Hill at the beginning of Bryce Lemon as well, so I think that just we need to and maybe that's a. I don't know if it's a necessarily a policy or through the rules and regs or something.
Yeah, those those are something where I think it would be um project specific with the decision. You know, looking at the situation, look at the access, like with um with Hilltop Estates and Briton all the discussion that the planning board had about. Which way which way would be less intrusive for the tra- traffic to access that property.
And then what what the developer is ultimately responsible for in repair or maintenance of.
Right.
You know, obviously, Briton's a gravel road, we had issues with Charnock um at the beginning of uh the Bryce Lemon stuff also, so.
Right.
I think, like I said, that's, I don't think road acceptance, which is another consideration. Paul, I think you had a question, I know Carol, you had some.
Yeah, there are a couple of three uh special interest groups in town that have roads. Um that. Belong to them, okay, and um they get plowed in the winter and this sort of thing and so, okay. So now, if they are going to apply into this process, the first thing they have to do is to get the road up to specifications to be accepted, is that the way?
Yes.
Is that the way I read it?
Yeah, usually, yeah, yeah, that would be at the discretion of the board, but yeah, um they would normally have to improve the town. Uh improve the road to um a standard that the town is comfortable with now. I've seen subdivision roadways that are accepted with certain waivers. So it doesn't mean they have to meet every standard, that would be again, at the discretion of the select board. And potentially the planning board, for instance, there are subdivision roadways that, you know, have waivers for meeting certain turning turning radius or. You know, um. In Rantham, they had a s- a a requirement that there would be sidewalks on both sides of a subdivision roadway. But developers would naturally always request a waiver to have it be on one side of the road and normally that waiver was granted, so. Yes, to your point, in general, yes, but it there could be waivers granted that the town would deem appropriate, for instance, I know. Um subdivision roadways in other towns I've worked in where the fire department does. Grant a waiver for roadway width as long as it's safe for them to access, so there could be waivers involved. If the if the if the town would uh deem it appropriate.
Okay, so they're gonna ask about things like drainage and sidewalks and all this stuff too, so you know. That's gonna be, this gonna be.
Yeah. Again, that's projects, that's location specific cuz in some areas, curbing may not be appropriate. You know, the the DPW planning board, select board may agree, you know what, Cape Cod berm is appropriate here, country drainage is appropriate here. Where there are some roadways where curbing could be considered a little bit excessive.
I got you, okay, thank you.
Carol, name an address, please.
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road, um. I apologize, I only skimmed this, but I haven't heard conversation about pump station. My understanding is when we accept roads in a subdivision that we are also by default accepting pump stations, is that?
Not completely, it's the same thing, the roadways, the construction of the roadway and the drainage, the pump station. Maybe part of that, but not in every subdivision, it depends on where the subdivision is.
And I think I think it should explicitly be called out in the language for the um.
Yes.
The lane of the ways and then the warrant article, whether there's a pump station or pump station's inclusive or not.
Right.
Um because that that was.
In disclosure is a pet peeve of mine, um. Because when a former GPW director had told me three years ago that. You know, and there's we have that no liability line on our budgeting, if something goes wrong with this pump station. It's like it could be a million dollars to to fix this thing, so um. I I I think again, educating residents when we go to uh. A town meeting. My other, another question is, and I think our DPW, current DPW director said that chapter ninety funds does not does not begin to cover. Our cost of accepting these roads.
No. No.
Thank you.
Is there any way that? We could, I say, you know, we're gonna give them a dollar to to give give us the roads in in what I'm what I'm looking at this. So is there any way that we could charge for taking on the obligation of the roads? And if not, or even if and. What to tell the, and I know again, it it depends on the length of the roads and all of that, but what is the cost to the town? To to take this on, because we don't, to John's point, and and I think we're beginning to. Understand that just because they ask doesn't mean we need to say yes, but what is the cost? So that an informed voter at town meeting would know, hey, this is this is not in the best interest of the town. Um and then one quick thing, is there any possibility, especially with some of the private roads that are out there, could something like this ever come via? Citizen's petition and if it does, what rights do we have as a town?
These are questions that are related to this, but this is basically to get a process in place, the the things I think you're bringing up are more specific. Town policy stance related in terms of whether or not the town should be accepting roads, this. This is basically putting a process in place so the town can review. Thing um. Requests that come forward to for acceptance of roadways, those other questions, yes, would be addressed as part of this process, but they're but they're really project specific. In terms of whether or not a roadway acceptance can be put through by citizen's petition, I'd have to ask legal on that one. I I don't wanna answer that either way, I'd have to ask legal on that one.
I mean, I and I, yeah, I think that would be a legal question for sure, but I would imagine because a lot of this is laid out per MGL, it would still have to.
They'd have to go through the same process.
Follow the same process, similar to how a zoning bylaw, citizen's petition still is supposed to follow that process, so.
Yeah. Correct, yeah, so they would be they would be subject to this process, just like developers would be.
Um.
Okay, I so thank you and and.
Yep.
Okay I s- so thank you and and I didn't wanna complicate the matter I guess I just wanted to take the opportunity while you were in the room to express some of the things that I think about.
Oh believe believe me I know I know there's a lot of history here I know again this is gonna be the first time the towns had this policy there's been a lot of there's been a lot of things that have happened previous to this a lot of you know that you know people are upset with not happy with a lot of things have happened in the past this is trying to get a pro- a standard process in place to to make sure as much as possible that some of the things that have happened in the past do not repeat themselves.
And Austin I don't know if you can speak tonight to uh uh essentially establishing a fund for roads that the town takes on from developers but I know I it doesn't seem like that's in the spirit of what MGL would allow but I don't know for sure I know also we do have in our sewer watering sewer regs that we're supposed to be establishing um funds for the some for the some stations the pump stations that um we I think they were put in place in twenty ten or two thousand eight two thousand ten John and Austin I think you discovered that when we were looking at other stuff um so none of that has ever come to fruition um and so any future projects we can't everything currently I believe is grandfathered in because they're active and under but any future it's on now on planning board's radar as well as.
Yeah, and the frustrating thing is this being before my time um when I talk to Chris about this or the planning board about this they both kind of act like it's the other who was it's it's the other ones responsibility so it's not clear as far as who is supposed to be collecting these mitigations funds for the pump station that's a frustration is they 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 you know e- either one asks that yeah we should have been doing this yeah we should have been doing this but some someone wasn't actually doing it.
Yeah, and I I and I commend both of you for discovering that cause it was something we had been asking for many iterations so
Yeah.
just as again things that we need to be mindful of and doing but.
Mis- missed opportunities.
To to give you an idea it's forty percent of the cost of the pump station and associated infrastructure so
But.
there's some components of a pump station for example like one of the pumps is fifty thousand dollars for replacement and I know that we've had to replace some pumps in some of these pump stations and it was born entirely by the ratepayers.
And it's something that we've been saying for I think Carol you and I talked about it a many times
Mustard.
Yeah.
asking because they're mechanical they have a life expectancy and is it fair to expand our sewer at the ratepayers expense when a s- pump station is potentially only servicing five to ten residents or whatever the number may be um so that was and and now as we're looking to have pump stations take on more um capacity than what they were originally built to ser- at maybe not to service but as servicing.
When Austin brought that to my attention last year that was very frustrating especially when we got the opinion back from town council that it was too late to go back and recoup these funds because it was at the time of application so yeah that's it it's frustrating when something comes to light that was before your time and there's.
So I realize we've kind of dig dig
Yeah.
gressed off of our street acceptance policy Paul do you have a question about the street acceptance policy?
Yes I do I'm just curious now okay if a road has been designated as a scenic scenic drive as it were
Mm-hmm.
okay or a dirt road
Mm-hmm.
okay is it it can stay that way?
Yes.
Yeah, okay because it's been accepted by the town in that way.
Correct, oh the their grandfathered in Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, that 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 they we wouldn't we wouldn't go back to these people say go now your town has to be accepted as a public way yeah, yeah.
Ah yeah I'm just, yeah okay.
Um so I think John was hoping to have um given that it's a policy and we can amend it at kind of the board's leisure I think John was hoping having all the review been done thus far to have the board um adopt the policy um as proposed or if there's any major you know big changes um I didn't really hear I think a lot of the questions were good valid questions but can kind of be addressed um are are broadly covered and then.
Right. Yeah, and I understand the comments from Jen absolutely understand where everyone's coming from I just like I said I do this I have the same stance with zoning bylaws where you have to be careful getting too specific in a policy like this because you might unintentionally create a loophole so um it there has to be a little bit of flexibility and I think that's that's in the best interest of the town to have some some generality to the policy and not get ultra specific.
Austin did Tom have any comments for this?
Uh he did it dropped out um because the internet is spotty right now um his comments were um his opinion was that the developer must pay um all costs associated with the project so echoing I think what was in the policy
Yeah.
um and that developers need to be held accountable fully for any word that's needed.
For instance the petitioner might be the town so in that case the board may wanna waive the fees on the town if they ever want something accepted as a public roadway that
It'd be in the best interest of the town to have, yeah.
that I will let it come up, yeah. Yeah.
Um so if there's not any other conversation I would entertain a motion to adopt the road acceptance policy as proposed to be effective as of March thirty first twenty twenty five.
Second.
Do you wanna move it?
Oh sure, I'll do that too.
We have a motion is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other conversation? Thank you.
I will reach out to town council with those two questions I'm sorry.
We have to vote, okay thank you.
Yep.
Roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in I.
Legislature.
Tom I don't know if you can hear us I think we're
His room's down right now because the internet's off.
I was gonna say okay, okay I was like I think we're frozen basically.
Alright and Whitman I
Thank you.
so thank you and thank you for all the work and everything and the comment for being here to you know talk about it and address it with us and everything.
Yep, I'll reach out to town council I know there are a couple questions about a citizen's petition article and also if we could establish a fund after the roadway's been accepted for maintenance I'll reach out to town council in the coming days and see what their opinions on that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Um moving back to old business um we have I think three things on our old business we have the fiscal year twenty six budget um continued discussion of the override um as well as proposed spending reductions um with action requested um I Austin do you want to talk about it I mean we FinCom met a couple weeks ago a week and a half ago I believe um to talk their sense still is I I I believe that their sense I don't think they had a a any vote but their sense was that we need an override that it's structure we have structural issues we've had structural issues um I think they still would have liked to have seen a larger multi-tiered longer lasting override to help get us out of the structural issues um Karen I know you're here as a resident but if I'm misspeaking by any means you or
You have not taken any votes.
I I I said that like.
I'm just waiting for you folks to give us the cut budget.
Right, I was gonna say and that the there was conversation around the cut budget um and that the cuts really shouldn't be at the the brunt of the um staff and that if the town's not willing to fund the budget then the town should be the ones to fill the cuts and not the staff to then have to piece it together was the general sentiment from FinCom but there were no votes taken I wanna be clear about that Austin did you want to talk about it or?
Yeah I mean so obviously there's um kind of the currently endorsed cut budget which um you know has impacts um to members of our staff and also um some supplies and services uh we had a discussion at the finance committee on their meeting of the twentieth and um the next morning I I I sent the board and finance committee just one more option if if you wanna take those comments into consideration but also recognizing that some of the comments that I think we've all probably heard in the community is that the current endo- endorsed budget you know may not be enough to to support an override um a one-year override just putting it out there as well um so I sent the a modified budget which you know has the following changes that were related to the both boards um no reductions in the clerical staff which was including the currently endorsed budget um shifting back the DPW staff that were transferred to water and sewer bringing that back to highway wages um slate increases to to various supplies and services purchase lines I tried to get as close as possible to some prior actuals I couldn't make everyone whole but but tried to get as close as possible um uh increased um the cut from ninety-five thousand for the town administrator salary to one oh five after some feedback from folks um after some feedback from finance committee increased streetlights um from a full cut to restoring it to twenty-two thousand um there's still a proposed uh cutting hours for the planner position um their request is to consider asking the planning board for use of their revolving fund for one year to make the planner whole uh while the town figures out long-term funding um for that office um leveled level funding all non-union wages including contracted one principal change was the fire chief salary uh he agreed to level fund his salary um and then restored the funding for the audit um I mentioned in my note to the board um adding these back it's expensive um the deficit goes to just about eight over eight hundred thousand dollars um to offset the impact the uh cost of our retiree health insurance is about a hundred and thirty thousand consider due to the nature of the emergency here consider using a hundred and thirty thousand from our OPEB trust fund to pay for retiree health insurance for this year only that remaining deficit would be seven hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and one dollars um the proposal if not going for an override uh would be to utilize that deficit of seven eleven from free cash um and you could still fund your stabilization fund at five percent your capital stabilization fund and I wouldn't propose putting into OPEB if we're taking out so that would not be funded the available free cash after these uh this use would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand which leaves just about eighteen percent of our free cash balance um and trying to be responsive to some of the comments and then just again what I've heard in the community that you know I think overrides are hard enough to pass but um you know the currently endorsed budgets um you know to put it bluntly for I think for members of the community maybe don't feel like there's enough to support possibly an override and obviously that's a political decision of board if you still wanna pursue it absolutely um but this is another option if you so choose um the discussion for tonight is to to make your final decision if you're going for an override um there would be a motion that we'd request tonight to transmit to the town clerk's office I can put that on the screen if you so choose but um the deadline for that is April ninth so this is your last scheduled meeting unless a special meeting is scheduled um to decide if there's an override ballot question or not that summarizes brief after everything thus far.
Thank you Austin and I think um you have a little bit maybe Austin from the other communities I've heard a little bit from the other Watshusit communities as well um that I believe because some of it was talking as to whether there was strategy and you know kind of all five communities pushing for overrides or not um I believe Paxton is the only community um that officially has voted to place a an override question um we obviously voted for an override but we haven't voted to place the to transmit the ballot question or transmit the question to the clerk for a ballot question um is that somewhat correct?
Yeah, so the only community that that's correct I believe the Holden Select Board was was kind of the one that we were waiting to see what they were doing it's my uh understanding from the town manager that the uh select board voted I think two weeks ago maybe um that they are not pursuing an override this year they're using free cash and I believe dipping into some other stabilization fund for this year.
And I believe Princeton.
Using all the free cash which is several million dollars.
Just like how much? To get down to the balance.
To balance.
Is it like ours?
Yeah.
Like there's nothing left for
Yeah.
projects.
Yeah.
emergencies.
And I believe Princeton is using a hefty amount of free cash.
They're using a substantial amount of free cash I believe the only one who's you know in a little bit of a better position is is Sterling um I believe they're using some free cash but they they already had levy capacity um already I think their comments are you know they're close I don't know how close that means in terms of if it's next year or a couple years will they be looking um at an override.
And so for me personally I I want the conversation for the board for me personally I had gone into it fully opposed to using any free cash because I think that we have shown that it's we have a s- major structural issue that's not going to get better if we don't take steps to address it I also was in favor of a multi-year um override knowing that a two point one million dollar override was going to be a one-year fix and we would be in a similar situation next year um that then seeing what we as a board voted with the two using up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash and what those cuts would look like would not impact it would impact severely our staff and the ability for our staff to do their job but it wouldn't be felt by the community as strongly as um some other cuts um and that was I think a lot of the consideration and concerns at FinCom um at that meeting on a couple weeks ago again there were no votes taken there but just that the cuts were were internal cuts that were going to be really hard and terrible for staff and the day-to-day functioning of government but not felt by the community um and so I think taking that feedback Austin had proposed this that would do essentially what Holden and Princeton are doing not addressing anything structural and throwing free cash um and some OPEB not not tapping into stabilization at all but OPEB trust um and then um looking to next year we would have to do something or make the cuts that we've been facing for years anyway so that's the um I like conversation from the board members here um what their take is but I know the board was split on an override in the first place and that there's active campaigns already out against an override um which is really dis- concerning to me personally knowing what that looks like from a budgetary perspective um that we have services that we want but we don't wanna pay for them um at some point we have to make that decision um but also knowing that a two point one million dollar override is going to get us a year and we're going to be doing this exact same thing again next year is also disconcerning disconcerning to me. Conversation?
Well, I guess I'll start unless Jen needs to.
No, please.
I I voted for the the override so we could get past it uh was not my favorite but the fact that I voted for it I feel like that should go through but I also feel that the free cash we have and the stabilization fund is not mine or the board's money it's the town's money and to not give the town the opportunity to have some of their money back and request an override of two and a half I personally think is unconscionable um we don't get paid to stockpile money no matter how bad things get we get paid, I'm gonna use that word paid to make sure we understand the financial impact to the town and do the best we can so as far as two and a halves is concerned I think we need to let the town make that decision my concern is if it doesn't go through if the town says no then what's our fallback? cause this fallback is decent but it needs to be tweaked it is not a fair budget and I think that needs to be discussed whether we do that tonight as the alternative or whether we have another session to discuss it or whatever but I I see some changes that need to be done here to be fair to every position in town and I do not see that.
So I just I think for me tonight is the night that we need to have a decision um we need to FinCom needs to be able to have a a final transmitted budget to them to be able to make their recommendations or not um it's not fair to staff or Austin um to continue this the town administrator is the one that's charged with the the developing the budget with select board input um the current with this current iteration um and then it gets transmitted to FinCom for um recommendations so I would like to have that finalized tonight.
To we've already agreed that we'll post the two and a half budget override, right?
Well we voted the the four of us here tonight voted in favor of pursuing a two and a half uh override of a two point one million dollar that we would need a motion to transmit that to the town clerk to place it on the ballot but I think the question is if we are then willing to consider putting between stabilization and between OPEB Between stabilization and between O P E B trust and free cash. Um. Eight hundred thousand, um almost nine hundred thousand dollars towards a budget if it were to fail. What's the motivation for the community to? Pass an override. I argue that the free cash should be used for capital projects. We know um that the town has a lot of outstanding capital projects and a lot more on the on the on the horizon. Um and touching stabilization, um given our dollar amount in stabilization not being crazy high. And knowing that we have some big projects going out to bid, I worry that touching any sort of stabilization. Would negatively impact our bond rating that then would cost us a lot more to borrow. Um I believe we still have, we're we are going out to borrow for the the ladder truck, right? And so we have some big items coming up to borrow as well as just kind of ongoing debt services. That uh changing our bond rating could could very much negatively impact that. Um.
Do we know?
Yeah.
Do we know how much of an impact it would have on our bond rating and our interest rate? Like, do we go from say where we are at three and a half to seven?
That that's incredibly hard to tell. If you if you could get me the direct line to the regulators and the bond rating analysts. Um that would be great, but otherwise, no, I mean, that's uh challenging. I I think it, you know, it it doesn't look good. Obviously, when a town starts depleting, that's definitely one of the factors that they look at. But it, you know, I I couldn't forecast to you what our rate uh would look like for this upcoming borrowing.
Well, I guess I'm concerned, cause if we are borrowing, say, a three or four percent now and we go to eight, I'd have an issue with that. But if we are at three or four now and it goes to four and a half. That's different. And that's the financial piece that nobody seems to know.
Well, in here, that's incredibly hard, because you know, as you know, one of the first things we have to do is when we go out and and borrow money, we have to develop develop an official statement. Uh which is a very comprehensive document that looks at all of this and we provide that report to the um. You know, to the to the banks and also to our bond rating agencies um for credit review. Right now, we have a we have a good bond rating um with double A plus, but. You know, given all of this and you know, any potential hit on uh our other reserves could could not look good. I'm just gonna be honest, they also look at other things other than reserves. They look at the ability to pay our our regular obligations. Um so are we raising enough revenue just to overall pay for our town operations? So um you know, it's not just our reserves, there's a lot of factors there to make sure that we're solving.
I mean, I didn't ask you, I I'm not looking to you to say, oh yeah, it's gonna be eight.
Yeah.
But if we are doing our due diligence, then somehow we should be able to arrive and say. If we deplete three hundred thousand dollars of it and we do this, are we gonna double our interest rates? There there.
No.
To me, it's unconscionable that we don't have some idea about that.
Yeah, but I I guess.
I'm not blaming you, Austin.
But it also, you know, one thing that we'll we'll never know is when the bond rating agencies will call. They could call us three years from now and say, hey, it's time to do a bond, it it's time to do a review. Um that happens a lot, especially for us, if we've if we've got long outstanding debt, they'll you know, they'll do random check-in. So that's one thing that we can never control is when um you know, when we'll be subject to review by S N P or Moody's or whatever.
I mean, we don't have thirty million dollars on the books for debt. So you know, if if we were borrowing thirty million for a school or something, I can understand then the issue. But some of the small stuff we're borrowing, fire truck, that's that that's not even a big bond issue. So uh that's why I'm trying to figure, are we gonna pay eight percent? So.
Uh but just remember, it's never a good look when a community's bond rating is downgrade.
Oh, I agree.
You know?
I agree, you know?
Even if we're borrowing nothing, if if even if we had no plans, we had no debt on the books, still not a good look, right?
Right.
And actually, I think we should also be looking towards having a little bit more debt. Because a lot of debt has fallen off that we haven't replaced and to maintain a a level of. Of debt service, we should be maintaining some of that. And we haven't because there hasn't been any desire to do that either. So I know having a lot of capital projects that have been long neglected as well as. Uh other things that will likely come up. It's um I don't feel comfortable. I personally think it's bad and it goes against our financial policies, I've said this before.
Mm-hmm.
To to balance our budget um with one-time revenues.
Mm.
Um. But again, I hear from, you know, F FinCom's concerns and my concerns and the community's concerns. That if we're if we're, and I'm gonna say putting Band-Aids on stuff and willing to to take the hit internally. And I don't wanna minimize what those hits are, but take the hits internally so that the public isn't necessarily feeling them. Then there's no impetus for an override. We can show the numbers all that we want, but um it's not there.
I I agree with Leah, I I. We need to do something, but if we can't get up at town meeting and demonstrate why we need an override. That makes sense to residents, say, yeah, that's worth it, let me give you some extra money. We shouldn't be doing it. We can't just go up there and blanketly say, we just need all this money just for operating expenses. And not have any sort of plan or anything to show what exactly it's going to.
That's a great point. I'm having a hard time answering that question. Like at the senior center, people come up to me and they ask, well, you know. What are we gonna get out of this? Or what happens if it fails? It's like, well.
Yep. To to.
Nothing substantial.
Exactly, to the point that we're saying, we're 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 doing what we can to keep the staff.
Right.
So you're not gonna see an impact, you know, maybe supplies.
Yeah.
You know, if our one of our D P W trucks or plows breaks down, maybe you won't see plows as much. Because we've used all of our free cash and we can't afford to buy another plow. You know, but we don't know those things until they happen and we can't afford to replace or add or fix.
Just like we don't know interest rates, I understand, you know?
So I don't, I I I think at this point, like I said, unless we can come up with a solid list to show exactly what services. For staff, obviously not in this case, that we would be losing, it doesn't make sense. A- and I think it's to to Leah's point, I I also agree, it goes against our financial policies. And we're just, we keep falling back on. Historical ways that we've used to balance the budget and it should be used for capital projects. That this town has not paid attention to and we're just constantly using one-time funds. For operating expenses and that should not be the case and we're just continuing to perpetuate that.
So I guess I have to ask, are we looking to do the two and a half tonight or are we looking to do this one tonight? I I I.
All of the.
I need some focus here, I guess.
We need a budget.
That's what I'm saying.
It's either we we agree to do the override budget or we talk about the cut budget and how we're going to fund it. Via free cash, whatever Austin has suggested.
See, I I guess I was thinking, since we already decided that we were gonna put forth the two and a half budget, I thought that was set. The override budget, I thought was set. And this was gonna be, if it fails, then this we have to go back to. But it's not something we're gonna present to the town. This is the fallback. So I I guess I'm confused now, we're talking something we already agreed on and now we're looking at something else.
Harry, I'm just trying to give the board another option because, you know, I'm having a hard time explaining this.
I I know you, I know you.
I can only imagine what you guys are getting for questions. You know, so I it, you know, it's my job to try to give you options um and try to be responsive to, you know, some of the comments from FinCom and members of the community. So you know, I I'm trying to help you here if if there's ways that you can get out of this. But um you know, ultimately, obviously, if if the board wants to make that vote and and move forward with the plan that was um. Made a couple of weeks ago. Um by all means, we can formalize that and transmit that to the to the finance committee for them to review that cut budget as well. But um you know, again, just trying to be responsive to some of the things I've heard. Uh whether internally, externally, um and give you guys another option.
And if I may, I think what Leah is trying to say is, yes, we agreed to to pursue a two and a half override. But since it wasn't transmitted to the clerk, we still have time to change our minds with new information that has come to light. So that's what we're trying to decide right now is, do we go back and say at this point, no, we're not gonna do the override. And we're gonna go forward with. The cut budget and balancing with free cash.
And I think my my concern is even if with the cut budget that we. We were a four-member unanimous board on the cut budget that used that we voted on a couple of weeks ago. With the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash, that even with that, that's not, the public's not feeling. The community's not feeling those hits.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, there was an uproar about even the discussion of reducing the council on the council on aging. The senior center director hours and the hours of that that building. And and there wasn't as much uproar on the library side, but there was a little bit. And so those are things that, you know, no, everybody, you know, I had heard. We need to go if if we're not, if the override fails, then we need to go into survival mode. And that's essentially public safety and D P W and core governmental functions. And everything else is is nice to have, but if we're not willing to pay, then that has to fall to the wayside. There was huge uproar against that and so then that became the two up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash. That the public wasn't gonna feel any of that, but our staff was going to feel it a lot. And it was going to be, it was going to impact the way kind of government functions internally. But again, the activities that the community would have wouldn't necessarily be felt. Unless there was a a major catastrophe breakdown or something. And that was with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then if we're using two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for stuff that people aren't going to feel. Then should we just do more and re- replace staff to a better position? So it's still not great, but it's better. And. If again, if the community's not gonna feel it, then the community's not gonna vote for it. Um like I said, we can sit here, I can sit here and I talk to the public and say, it's a structural deficit. At some point, it's gonna catch up to us. We need to stop just limping along and putting Band-Aids on things like. But. That's not a consensus in in even among this board, I don't think. And among individuals in this room and outside of this room. And so to even try to have that conversation and say, this is what we need to become a better, better, stronger community. Um while we are also advocating at the state to to fulfill some of their state funding obligations, which would also assist us. Um I I struggle kind of doing the push for a two and a half when it's two point one, that's gonna get us a year. When the public's not feeling the cuts. I don't know, that's I think where I where I am. I fully am on board with an override. That's again, I wanna be clear on that. But I don't know that it's. The the current push is there to to have any impetus for it to pass. Name and address.
Carol Benoit, um first of all, to to Harry's point, if if our bond rating goes and tanks a little bit, we could refinance. If you know, we recover, we refinance. So it's not a thirty-year forever, so just that. But. For years, we've been hoping to be on the same page as others districts in the in or other towns in the district.
Recording in progress.
Yeah. So if Holden isn't gonna do an override and Princeton's not gonna do an override and Rutland's not gonna do an override. There might be strength in that against the school. Um cause I, you know, we're always, what are they gonna do? What are they gonna do? So it's just something to consider. If we don't do an override and we do what the other towns are doing, it shows. Cohesiveness in in the district towns, I don't know.
I don't know from the other communities what their stance is on the school budget. Um I either, I think, you know, we have to figure out a plan. Um. As in some ways, assuming the school budget passes, because we've been burned many, many years where the school budget. We failed the school budget, but the other communities passed it and we need to figure that out. And so we need to have that in the back of our minds. Um and I I've said it here, I've said it again. I think I have a very hard time. Decimating town and decimating schools because we don't wanna pay for what we want. And so I think that that's a little bit of where at some point, we need to figure out what we want as a community and pay for it. And that's where we are for me personally. Um and so. You know, there was a lot of advocacy at the state level. There continues to be a lot of advocacy at the state level for funding of education as well as local um government. But that's not going to be a, that that may not be a this year fix. And it's not going to be a guarantee forever and always, um unfortunately. And so we really do need to figure out um long-term sustainability. Because we can, even if, you know, the if two of the five Wachusett towns continue to fail the school budget. At some point, I mean, the school is already, we we've seen the data, right? They're it's not, they're not overinflated, con contrary to what the the belief is, education is expensive. And so we can continue to decimate the education, that's gonna tank our property values. Because a lot of what drives, whether we like it or not, drives our property values is a a reason, uh is a good education system. As well as the other services that we have. So we want to have. A viable community. So I I I understand, but that's where I personally come from.
But I I I think Jen's right. If we're gonna really do our job at the town hall meeting to describe why we need it. We really have to let the town know that the two point one million is not the town's, all the town's cost to operate. It is the school. The one point six million, we have to let them know that is the school we're asking for you to to override. What we need will be roughly five or six hundred thousand to make up what we're down. So if if we do that, I think it's important that we do do that distinction. We're gonna make a one, you know, I don't know how it's gonna come out, but I would assume one override bill wanted. But we gotta lay out the debt, we gotta be transparent on what is Rutland's share, what is the school's share, you know? I I just, and and I'm not opposed to this version. What I'm opposed to is some of the things I think are unfair in here when it comes to salaries and pay. That's what I think is unfair. And I'm willing to work with this, but I want some, I'd like to see some changes there. And if we can't agree on that, then yeah, we've gotta go for the override.
So. Harry, the version that you say that you're on board with but want some changes is the one that uses the the O P E B funds. And the seven hundred and twelve thousand from free cash, is that the one that you're you're talking about?
Yeah, the whole. Yeah.
Okay.
The nine, the right, the the seven eleven, the forty-nine and the forty-nine, right, for for monies.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right.
Yeah, version two point two.
Name and address.
We'll have, we'll have point six by the end of this discussion.
Jean Sigley, Anna Sissy Drive.
I think it's simple, go ahead.
Do we, as the citizens, vote for the school budget separate from the town budget at town meeting? Is that a separate article?
Not usually, I don't think.
So it's been done a few different ways, depending on the iteration. I think more recently, the the push has been to keep it all as a municipal budget. Um Austin, do you recall?
What are you doing this year?
So this, we we haven't spoken about, we haven't made.
Yeah, I mean, you reviewed the 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 concept that we had when we were talking about, you know, going for an override. So that was the um, you know, that one article that showed contingent budget, not contingent budget or not override, override budget.
Yeah.
So you know, that was one concept. Historically, there would be a town budget article, a Wachusett budget article and a Bay Path budget article, historically.
So if the town votes no on the school and another town votes no on the school, the school has to redo their budget.
They have to reconsider their budget, but they could, they could come back with this the same ask, uh more than ask, uh less than by a dollar. But yes, they would, it would be a failed school budget. But again, historically, we have gone into town meeting thinking that there would be a a second town to fail it. And it's passed and then we've gotten, we've had to pay the bill. And so I think that more recently, we've been trying to ensure that if we have to pay the bill, there's monies there to pay the bill. Karen, am I speaking wrong about the history of stuff?
We've done it several different ways, depending upon the year. Every single year, it's done differently, yeah.
So and right now, you've approved a two point one override. You guys voted for that. So the next thing is to approve what the.
uh failed budget is.
Mm-hmm.
So is that?
Well, and currently, our current failed budget proposal that we that the board voted on two weeks ago was a failed budget that would utilize up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash. But the cuts that were in that that presented failed budget that the board voted in favor of were internal cuts that were really cutting um clerical staff. And I think the clerical staff was the big one. Um, there was some other reduction in hours, significant reduction in hours and or salary in other places as well. Um, but again, not something that most citizens would they they would maybe complain about the hours of town hall or the accessibility of of staff, but not in the services, if that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I I if if you put in a call to, and this is my opinion, if you've been a call to dispatch that your husband or wife is having a heart attack, I don't think the ambulance is gonna take two hours to get there. I don't think we're talking about that kind. I don't think that our DPW will never plow roads because they don't have the people. Yeah, we're cutting back of some stuff.
No, they can go fix the sewers.
They'll, you know, they might get out there shoveling then, cause they don't have gas to afford in the trucks. But you know, I I you know, yes, we are gonna see some some cuts there. We are gonna see a little bit of pain there, but I don't think it's gonna be massive surgery that this town is, we we've done this before and we've lived through it. So uh I I don't wanna see that. I wanna see something reasonable and fair for everybody.
So I guess I'm just not understanding why you're not going with what you voted with for the for the override. And then you can take time after this to line by line do that other budget.
Because we, and I won't speak for the board, but I am not comfortable that I could get up in front of town meeting and say, this is why I'm asking you for two point one million more dollars. And if I can't say that and express what that is, I'm not gonna ask for it.
And so I personally am, I'll let the gentleman speak also, but I personally am comfortable saying why I why I'm advocating for the two point one million dollars. But I think for a majority of our residents that aren't going to feel and I say feel an impact because to Harry's point, it's not like we're not gonna have an ambulance service or it's not like we are closing the senior center or the library or that we are going down a to a part-time police force or something of that nature. So the ma- majority of residents aren't going to feel feel it. And so if I'm not feeling it.
I should be able.
Right. Like I said, I can sit here and say structurally, this is what we need and and it's only going to get worse.
So you wanna make it, you wanna make it hurt basically.
I I think that's.
That's the only way that it's going to have an impact.
And it should hurt and and to FinCom's point, I agree with FinCom, it should hurt. And it's not, it was a a conversation at FinCom, I don't, they again, I wanna be clear, they didn't vote. But it should hurt, it shouldn't hurt our staff. And that's currently what it's doing is it's hurting kind of our internal staff and not not the residents.
Well, how would you make it hurt the residents?
Well, like I said, uh.
Because it's because we have served the residents.
Right, but if we are closing senior center or a library or cutting significantly back.
Or school.
Well, we're not.
We're bound by the regional agreement, so we don't have a lot of say.
Right. And and our student population is nowhere near that we can talk about um closing schools at this point for even for Rutland. But but yes, to to close something or significantly reduce public safety hours or um availability or something, that's something that that the community is going to feel. Um.
But it wouldn't be equal across the board, it would be one thing.
Right.
Right.
So you have to pick the one thing you're gonna hurt.
Well, and and I have many, many residents, when we were talking about the the override, reach out and say, if the override doesn't pass, everything needs to be cut except public safety and DPW and the core functions of government that you that you need to have, treasure collector, clerk, assessor, um, you know, the board of health, the town administrator, board of health, the the core, core, core pieces. But other than that, library goes, council on aging goes, like.
Where are you gonna meet?
Right.
But and and the problem is cutting those, it doesn't add up.
It it doesn't have.
Right, it doesn't.
To your two point one million, right?
Right.
I mean, that's just those two services alone is maybe four hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's not even gonna.
Right. Right.
Do anything.
Yeah.
Right.
So it it's hard, I mean, this is why, again, to to go here, you guys make the big bucks.
Right.
Um, you know, this is a hard decision and that's why you've had, um, I wasn't serious when I said this at the beginning, that we were gonna have forty-five different budgets, but we're getting close. Um, you know, the initial cut budget that was asked by you guys, uh, that was two point one million in cuts, but it hurt. And that was presented February third.
Yeah.
Um, and we've gone through several iterations responsive to some of your feedback to restore some things, right? Restoring revenue generation, but you know, there's trade-offs with every decision that we make, whether it's revenue or expenses. And you know, that's where you create those inequities, right? There is, you know, adding more to others to try to preserve things. But um, this is the difficult decision that you guys are required to make. Um, and this is, you know, this is the end of the process. Unfortunately, we don't have any more time to make another budget. And I I with all due respect, I'm not gonna make another budget.
Okay.
It's not fair to you or to staff to consi- continually have.
I agree, so can I make a motion?
Sure.
A motion to move forward with a discussion on a cut budget, Rowan, uh, Rowan, that's my thought. Um, Austin's most recently presented cut budget and not pursue a two and a half override.
So to.
For fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
To withdraw the two and a half override, um, not transmit that to the town clerk
Yep.
and work with the utili- utilization of
Free cash.
free cash and OPEB trust or others.
Is that a budget we have or not?
Not yet.
We do?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
To discuss this budget.
To not pursue the override, to withdraw it.
To with.
To not pursue the override, okay.
For this year.
I'll second that.
Is there any other conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second, alright.
That's a no.
I draw it.
Town voted yes.
Town voted yes. And White Men, no, but the motion passes. So we will continue with, um, we will withdraw the override and we will continue with utilizing of the um OPEB trust and the free cash as you.
Good.
So and can I ask one more question about this?
I I.
So since we're not doing, I'm sorry, Jen, do you wanna go?
I was just gonna say, I wanted to clarify, that was to withdraw the override. I still would like to have some discussion on the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I mean, I think that, but I think it was.
Yes, using the free cash and and yes.
Yeah.
Um, so my question is now about the Warren article, right? The Warren article that was um proposed, contemplate an override. I think now we probably go back to more of a traditional setting where we have town budget, school budgets separated. That probably makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so separate them out again.
I think so.
Okay.
May I just ask a quick question? Are we still gonna continue with the budget public information sessions or are those no longer necessary?
If we, for me personally, I think if we're not pursuing an override, the whole point of having those public information sessions was for the override. That was my thought, yeah. Um, I do think that going forward, we do need to not leading up to town meeting, but we do need to have public information sessions as to the the fiscal state of Rutland and what that um looks like. And I would advocate that we start that much sooner rather than later so that we can decide in the summer if we're closing departments and cutting things versus um.
Mm-hmm.
And and if I may, I to echo Leah's sentiments, I still am fully supportive of an override. We need it, we need to do something obvious, but obviously with the way that budget discussions have gone this year, we have, we've been talking in circles and we have not a lot that we can go to the residents to say, this is why we really need it. So that's the reason why I voted to remove pursuing the override. I am in favor of continuing the plan that we discussed for next year, which is coming up with a plan and a proposal to pursue a multi year, whatever we need to do for to get us out of that structural deficit. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
And I echo your sentiments, Jen, as far as the multi-year funding process as well. Moving back now to our um cut budget and our the version that we had currently have on the books as approved, which is using up to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash versus the version two point two um that uses significantly more of free cash and potentially um OPEB trust um or other.
Sure, a couple questions. So I, we reinstated all the clerical staff. There were still a couple of line items in there that had wage increases.
Uh, can you just call some out for me just so I'm clear?
I think one was the, I wanna say the assistant assessor.
So that is a union position.
So.
So that's part of the clerical staff. So there's eleven uh eleven positions in the union, so all of those positions are included.
Yeah.
With with their union negotiated.
And restored back to those. No, we so so um
Salaries.
I restored back based off of comments, right? I restored back all union hours, which includes all the clerical staff
Yeah. Yep.
in that union.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you want me to still propose that to the union, I'm scheduled to meet with them on Friday. I do think there's gonna be a problem if we restore back um certain positions rather than others. That's why the proposal was a clean twenty-five percent across, um, and to be bargained obviously by the union. But um what you see here was reflective of adding back all hours that were reduced from the union staff.
How does it, why does it show an increase in the wages though?
Because they receive a, they receive a step in COLA.
Okay, so that's why, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess on, I I realize that they're union, but why are we asking our contract staff not to take their contracted salaries?
Non-union, non-union, so there was a there was a request to to for all non-union and contracted staff. So that's why the proposal came from me to cut my salary, proposal from the finance director to cut to level fund hers, police chief and the uh fire chief agreed to level fund his.
Okay, so is that something that I I realize again, it'd have to be negotiated, but just restoring staff, but can we see if uh on level with contract, can we see if they would negotiate
So if I.
level funding selves.
Yeah, I mean.
If I my understanding, sorry, Austin, my understanding is with unions is essentially
Yeah.
you go and say, this is pot of money and they kind of say how they're willing to
Yeah.
to do it. So some unions are gonna say across the board, we're okay to reduce hours or not take a step or or whatever. Others are not going to have that same philosophy. So it's really union specific.
Okay.
By doing this, we wouldn't have to bargain anything. So I I call the rep tomorrow morning and say, you know, the board authorized the budget that does not impact your union.
Right. Um, and then my other comment again was surrounding the TA salary. I I I still go back to my previous comment that and and even in light of the news that was that we we now had from this evening that was announced, we cannot cut that salary. We have to be able to budget for the future because we are never going to hire a TA at that salary.
To be clear, Jen, you will not find a full-time town administrator by July first on this.
No, 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 and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, but.
Right, so. So you're gonna have go through a process, you know? If I left right now,
Yeah.
um, you guys would probably have an acting, um, which you 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 pay a little bit of the rest out of this year. Um, assuming you don't have an interim for eighteen months again, right? That's where I think you end up spending a lot more money is having interim for so long. Interims are are supposed to be usually three to six months. So you go through your process, um, and you would, um, you know, probably find someone by the middle, maybe to the early part of next calendar year, um, to have someone. Once you go through your full recruitment process, they give their sixty to ninety day notice to their town, come here. Um, one oh five would be plenty of money.
But my point maybe, if we're not budgeting for it now, how are we gonna come up with an extra, how much?
You're not budgeting, again, you're not budgeting for full salary because this contemplates transition. Right? I'm agreeing to the salary for the next fiscal year, so I will be here until April third, so this is gonna cover most of the year.
Right.
Um, you're gonna have a little bit of money left over through this salary. Um, and you also have an opportunity in the fall, once you have new growth. Um, and once you have, you know, a better idea of what the fiscal picture looks like, you can add back resources. If you know, this is what you guys feel strongly about is that that salary is underfunded. Um, but again, my question is is, do you want more free cash or where do I cut? Right? So I'm agreeing to this and obviously I recognize the the potential change here and transition here. But there's no way that an interim or an acting, um, you shouldn't have to use all of this money. If you did, then there's something wrong with the process for searching for a new TA. But I'm happy to add it back, again, I just need to know where I'm gonna take it.
Um.
Well, I guess if I'm looking for fairness out there and what you say is on your statement here is that we talked about level funding. You level funded all non-union wages.
Yeah.
You have to describe me what you mean by level funding. Is it the same as what it was in twenty-five? Could we level funding that?
Yeah.
Because I see a lot of cost of living increases there, so we're not really level funding.
Well. For which non-union staff?
Well.
Probably the ones I was saying, Harry, which are the the union staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so but those are union, so.
Right, non-union staff.
Those are the unions.
No, 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 non-union staff is what I'm talking.
But which ones? So I'm just, and you know, that could be an honest mistake on me, Harry, just rolling through here, I
I didn't see any of that word.
I'm looking at, but any increases you see are for union staff.
I got a couple of pages here. Uh, where do I start?
Just quickly.
Oh, question, clerk, is the clerk non-union or union?
The the town clerk is non-union, the assistant town clerk is union.
Okay. Now, I noticed that assistant town clerk got a ten percent raise. Nobody else got that.
So so that's reflective of, um, and you recall at the fall town meeting, we increased the hours for the assistant town clerk to thirty-four hours to match the building hours. So this, but we didn't fund it, cause we didn't need to, we're only funding it for a portion of the year, right? So this is reflective of, um,
Increase in hours.
Increase in hours for a full year.
So it's not actually a raise.
So okay, so that ten percent is a reflection of the extra hours.
The extra hours absorbing for a full year.
Plus the the union contractual increases.
Okay.
Plus his, you know, staff and um and yeah, COLA.
Right.
And dispatch wages?
Dispatch had about an eight percent, I believe, raised.
They. Uh, four point six for dispatch.
One point six.
Four point six, those are all union.
Those are all union too, okay.
Yeah, those are union.
Alright, so that's the ones I was saying were the unions.
Uh, we love one of the. Yeah, yeah.
And.
Case and fire, same union, obviously there you see reductions.
Is the assistant treasurer?
Assistant treasurer is union.
Uh, salary is union?
That's a, that's a union. The payroll AP assistant is union.
Okay.
Um.
Well, then let me, who isn't union?
Department heads, Tamika.
Just one?
Uh, department heads in Tamika and library staff, all the aides and the assistants in the library.
Did they get a raise? Cause I didn't see that.
No.
They didn't get a raise. Um, nothing against Tamika, but I mean, if being fair across the board, a three percent raise should be going back to what it the department required with or was sixty-one, three eighty, sixty-seven, which was the twenty-five budget. If we're gonna level fund it.
For for who?
Well, Tamika's the only non-union, but there's other issues I have too, that's not.
No, so uh because you were. Because you were clerical staff, I I I gave you your increase.
I was gonna say, the I see the town admin exec assistant salary as having a three point one one percent increase.
Correct.
Um.
But that's not level funding.
So I can level fund that, Harry, the nineteen hundred dollars.
I mean, that's just. I mean, that's just a- a- again.
Yeah.
Now, the the real big issue for me, there's two big issues for me. Number one is the council on aging director. She has been underpaid as a directorship out there for a couple of years now.
Harry, can I just stop you there?
Yeah.
When we're talking about cuts though, in a cut budget, where we're level funding people, I'm not sure we're in a position.
Yeah.
That's why, you know, obviously received the feedback and level funded. Um Mike Moriarty's position as well, the 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 dispatch director. Um the proposal obviously for this year is level fund everyone, right?
Well, uh if if we are gonna level fund everybody, but we can't level fund union.
That's 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 how unions work.
That's how unions work.
No, that's what I'm saying, so if we can't be fair across the board and unions, which is a new contract, they're getting then why are we being disrespectful toward a director who is the lowest paid of all directors out there? For the director.
Yeah, Harry, you know, obviously this is, you know, a discussion, but.
I mean, this is a concern for me to be fair.
But Harry, you just caught me two minutes ago.
Yeah, level funded, right?
But you're proposing giving them an increase.
But wait a minute, I don't want, okay.
Hold on, wait, guys, listen, like.
Uh yeah, I'm not gonna get into all the reasons, how you got stuff, okay.
But hold on, can we can we uh first and foremost, you know, I'm not a fan of budget discussions where we're actually mentioning people,
I'm talking about.
uh explicit positions are people, you know.
Wasn't possessed.
But no, no, but listen. I think this is a policy decision, right? The board made a motion, I don't know how many weeks ago now, to level fund non-union positions. Most non-union positions are department heads, Tamika, library, uh aides and and the assistants there.
Mm-hmm.
Um so, you know, that's the equity there, right? So, you know, the unions, we follow the collective bargaining agreement, non-union staff as they've historically unfortunately um receive this, receive no increase. Um and that's what's reflected here is status quo for salaries.
Okay.
And I think if I I've heard feedback also that by level funding the non-contracted, well, the non-union personnel, that puts some supervisors making the same or potentially less than the people that they're supervising because of the union contracts. And so uh we wanna talk about equity, it's across the board, that then we are then going in and picking and choosing, and it was a policy decision and not a line-by-line budget item discussion. I think, Austin, I don't wanna speak for you, I think maybe the the rationale by increasing, by including the executive assistant position in an increase similar to what the um clerical union would see was that we as a board had um decided to withhold that position, given the sensitivity of some of the the material and everything, so that position was excluded from the union. Um I don't know, there are other positions that are also ex- that weren't ever considered to be included in the union, so I think that that's also some of the.
Well, I I you know, I I fully I I sent this budget to you guys at five thirty in the morning. Obviously, I started work on it before that, so I was looking at clerical staff and I
Yeah.
added back the increases for clerical staff.
I I I will tell you, I I think that you saying twenty-five percent across the board was one way to solve our problem, but I I personally feel that that was pretty much, that was pretty tough for a lot of people to take, cutting their pay by twenty-five percent. But if we're gonna be fair, then what would we do as a normal cut? Ten percent across the board? You know, cuz like you said, we're spend- we're we're spending three quarters of a billion dollars here almost. You know, seven hundred eleven thousand. So if we're gonna cut anything, we've gotta look at across the board being fair with everybody then.
But but that's, I think my.
But if you if you level fund, then yeah, we're at the seven hundred thousand and then we'll level fund it. I mean, there are some people who do deserve more money, who who should have gotten a raise, who didn't, so. But like I said, this is a version that I I can be more behind than the two and a half. Cuz everybody feels the pain, well, no, everybody won't feel the pain. Only the town will feel the pain taking the money.
I so I mean, this this is probably the closest to one of your initial proposals, right? Where it was a million dollars in free cash and then a million dollars override, right? So, you know, in this case, obviously, we're taking the million dollar override off the table, town departments in terms of their purchasers and supplies are taking cuts. Um you know, also just wanna fully recognize that, you know, the Wachusett school budget did come in a little bit lower than the initial budget proposal that we had a couple of months ago, right? Um so the impact is, you know, or the deficit is a little bit lower, so we've taken uh you know, let's say about a million dollars in reductions.
I mean, my.
I only need seven or eight hundred from uh.
If I might, my original proposal on that was so the board could look at it and decide whether do we do a million dollar override or do we do a million dollar cut from the budget. That was really what I was trying to do, was to get us look at an alternative to the two and a half that might have a chance of passing. Rather than going for the full two and a half, but you're right, we're very close to that now.
And so I think the question kind of before us, Jen, I know you had questions kind of about the the salary piece. Um and Harry, I know you had questions about the sal- salary piece as well. Were those questions answered?
Uh yeah, as far as the council on aging is concerned, the director, yeah, she she is level funded. Uh I'm still gonna say she's underpaid for what she does. When you look at what the average is in the area for that type of position. I also think the planner being leveled is underpaid in his position for what he does. Cuz you are now have two people who are almost equal to salary personnel and they are directors and responsible for a lot of stuff in in this town. And that's my concern, and then that's what I'm gonna say.
Harry, I I don't disagree, I think we have many positions in town that are underpaid because this town can't afford to pay more. Again, I'm gonna point out the town administrator, even the salary that he was hired at is probably
Woefully low.
woefully low for what he does. So I don't disagree that we have underpaid staff for what an industry standard is. My concern is that we cannot just pick and choose certain positions to get them up to a place where they should be, that needs to be done collectively. We need to have a classification plan that Austin had, we've talked about in the past. We we don't have to understand what those salaries should be and what's the plan for being able to fund that when we can't even fund our our existing less the the low salaries, we can't even fund those through our current revenues, so and we how how can we possibly be talking about adding more to that from a salary standpoint? I I I don't disagree, but there needs to be more of a plan and it needs to be done across the board to get all underpaid staff up to an industry standard, not just one or two particular positions.
Uh I I I I guess I don't understand when you say underpaid, is that in regards to municipality or to corporate?
To municipalities.
Because I've looked through all these things, I I could hardly find anybody that was underpaid. So from my perspective.
There's quite a few.
For what we ask them to do, and if you say underpaid, then we have to look at what benefits they're given compared to corporate America.
I'm not comparing to corporate, I'm talking about other municipalities.
Well, see, you well, then then they're really not, if all the benefits we're giving them, then they're really not underpaid.
But if if. Can we get back to, can we get back to the budget, I guess?
Yeah, we it's it's not here, Harry.
We have, Austin had proposed um with the current version two point two budget would be pulling out a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from OPEB trust fund, not putting any free cash back into OPEB trust trust fund. Just one point of, I just wanna put it out there, in the past, when FinCom had been talking about potentially taking money out of stabilization or capital stabilization for a project, they still felt strongly that they wanted to see that the percent go in because it was to the financial policy. So even if we were putting in, I'm gonna say ten thousand dollars and we wanted to take out ten thousand dollars, I think FinCom previously had felt very strongly that it was following financial policy and we are showing that we're putting that money in and then off asking to 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 take it out also. That obviously would increase our free cash spend by roughly fifty thousand dollars, I believe, because I think that it's the same percent across the board as the other two. Um but I just wanted to put that out there, that that had been previous conversation with uh or kind of FinCom's take previously. Um the the um changes that are included, just to reiterate again, as Austin had mentioned, that we haven't talked about is um the the dollar amount of free cash, and I know at planning board the other night, there was conversation about the planners' hours and that they were requesting that select board that get come fully out of the general fund. Um I don't think we got official communication from them, but I know that that was uh at their meeting, a conversation about that. Um I think that it's a very fair ask for, um I'm not, I don't have off the top of my head, and I apologize, what the difference in the planners' um hours and salary are on this proposed budget and what that would look like coming out of the planning board revolving fund. But given that the planner works very intensely with the planning board, um I don't think that that's an unfair ask for planning board to contribute um some funds, not the entirety, but some funds on um especially tough budget years, it was a similar conversation with enterprise funds for um when there was talk about shifting water and sewer um personnel as well as stormwater and when we had the conservation agent, um if conservation agent's salary could come out of Wetland Protection Act funds also. Um so I don't think that that's an unfair ask, um.
Right.
What is the board's kind of feeling as far as the the general proposal from Austin with the hundred and thirty from OPEB trust and the seven eleven six oh one from free cash, um still allocating money to stabilization, capital stabilization? Is there a desire to allocate into OPEB trust, although we're removing from OPEB trust? Um and is the seven eleven six oh one a good number, do we wanna see more?
I have a question for Austin. Did you say that although it's recommended, we put five percent into the capital stabilization fund? Are we recommending that we don't do that this year?
No, that's that's still in the funding uh for the free clash cash plan there, so it still puts into general stabilization and capital stabilization. The only, that proposal does not include any funds into the OPEB trust fund. So that's in that plan that I sent you guys.
You think we you think we should recommend not putting it into capital stabilization this year?
You could.
Only because we we're taking a lot of money out of it to buy stuff this year too, so.
Well, I I I to be, I mean, I think your capital plan is gonna look very minimal for this year, um given the heavy use of free cash and.
And again, I just wanna reiterate that
Okay.
we're we're going against all of our financial policies by using this much of our free cash and then we're going to go against our additional financial policies by not funding at five percent of our free cash um OPEB trust, and then we're talking about not funding um one or both of the stabilization accounts also. Um I think that that's
In my opinion, we need to keep them, we're we're utilizing almost all of our free cash, we need to have something available for some sort of emergency purchases if they come up. And I think we should, if we're we're yeah, it needs to keep going in there, if we're gonna use the free cash, then we need to at least add something to it.
To just be clear, you know, it free cash doesn't disappear, right? It'll stay, that one eighty-five will still stay in that balance, so if the board, you know, whether it's special town meeting or next annual town meeting, wants to allocate a little bit more to make up for what you you know, used or didn't allocate um for the annual, you know, that's obviously something that the board can can do. Um you know, I hoping for some, you know, excess revenue for the at the end of this year to increase also our current free cash and any sort of turnbacks that we have, which are slowly dwindling um as we continue to the end of this year, but um we'll have, you know, more than one eighty-five.
Okay.
At least.
Okay.
Um so, sorry, I'm just so if we were to um, Austin, I know that you had said kind of that we could always do it in the fall. Um if we were to put in the forty-nine eight sixty-six into OPEB trust as well, um maintaining the seven eleven six oh one for the operating budget. Um and then the forty-nine eight sixty-six in individually into stabilization, that amount into capital stabilization and that amount into OPEB trust, that would leave us with a hundred and thirty-six.
One thirty-six, one eighteen.
Yeah, one eighteen in free cash in going into the fall, um. Knowing that, you know, there are line items that are not maybe necessarily funded. We Austin, you added back in the audit and the um the streetlights and everything, so I think that there's more true, um but we have to still fund and make cuts. So is the board should we not put in the OPEB trust and keep it that way? Take the hundred and thirty out, not put any in? And then go into the fall with a hundred and eighty-five, nine eighty-four? Or are we still?
Uh how dangerous are we on the OPEB?
What do you mean?
Well, if you don't put the hundred and thirty in, where does that leave us taking the others out? I I mean, is that dangerous for us to do that?
So current balance of OPEB is seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, so you know, taking out one thirty brings you to six,
Okay.
putting in fifty again, you're, you know, six fifty, so.
And we're nowhere near funded where we should be, like, guys.
Yeah, I mean, we're well, well, well underfunded on OPEB, um which I have some thoughts on, but that's not for tonight.
Well, kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, no intent, no pun, no pun intended.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you have an OPEB trust fund, I mean, there's there's communities, especially the past few years with, you know, consistent overrides across Commonwealth that are dipping into it for these purposes, so. Um it, you know, it's established for retiree health and and life insurance, so you know, we ran the numbers and our our costs for next year for our current retirees are right around this figure.
Okay.
What's the negative if we don't add to it? Is it just we don't add that additional piece to it?
Yeah, I mean, we're still taking more out than we're putting in, right? So we're still reducing our OPEB trust fund, um.
So to me, it doesn't make any sense to take a hundred and thirty out just to put fifty back in. Why don't we just take eighty and then find the fifty someplace else, if that's what we're gonna do?
So I think.
Or just don't take it, just take out the one thirty and then don't put anything in.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you, you know, if you.
Well, that's I think what the pro- original proposal was, it's more of a policy thing, and again, because
Yeah.
Right.
I had this conversation about something else with FinCom a couple of years ago and the the thought was we're following our financial policies and we're showing town that we're following our financial policies by doing this obligation.
Recording in progress.
I'm not one hundred percent sure if OPEB trust requires a vote to withdraw and does it need to be a s- simple majority or does it need to be a two-thirds to withdraw, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it'll be, yeah, it would it would be part of this, you know, the budget motion, so super majority, yeah.
Right. But does it, it it is simple, cuz I know that was, but I I think FinCom had felt that it was a following financial policy transparency piece um to put in and take out versus just.
For OPEB as well?
F- I think it was for, because all three of those are in our financial policy, um that those three are funded at the five percent. So it wasn't specific to OPEB, I think that specific one, I believe, was a capital stabilization question, um. But that was the rationale was why, yeah.
Oh, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to take out and then put money back in. I mean, there's the stabilization funds, we're we're looking at contributing, we're not looking to take anything else back home.
Recording in progress.
Now, right?
Right.
The well, uh yeah, probably our capital plan won't won't use anything, we'll see, I mean, yeah.
So. We'll see, but.
Yeah.
So then is the board comfortable with the version two point two budget as presented by the administrator? Um to transmit to FinCom to for them to make their recommendation then? Um or um does Tom, I saw that there was a chat, but I don't know if he's just commented that he was back or, okay.
Back, yeah.
Um I personally, again, and this is probably from my watching of FinCom, would like to see the the money go into OPEB, but if we do it in the fall, then I guess that's, you know, we. would like to see the the money go into OPEB, but if we do it in the fall, then I guess that's, you know, we earmark it that that's a consideration for the fall. Um but that would be my only um so that would add in the other forty-nine eight sixty-six. And that would bring the available free cash to the What One.
Recording in progress.
But if the board is comfortable with the way Austin presented it, then I'm it's not a hill I'm gonna die on. I would entertain a motion. Or additional conversation. I see the motion being as as the V two point two budget as presented by the town administrator um or uh as presented but adding in the five percent back into the OPEB trust or if there's some other consideration that the board is interested in.
Uh. Go ahead, Jen.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with version two point two as presented by the town administrator. No additional changes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other conversations? So just for clarity, it's the hundred and thirty thousand from OPEB trust and a seven eleven six oh one from free cash. Um and that still utilizing five percent into stabilization which is forty-nine eight sixty-six, five percent into capital stabilization, which is forty-nine eighty-six eight sixty-six which would allow for a free cash balance moving forward of one eighty-five nine eighty-four.
And just make sure
Recording in progress.
All non-union wages. And I'm okay with it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
That's it.
Ledry. Tom is gone.
He is gone.
Um Whiteman eye. So that's that do we need a motion to offici officially transmit this as the final to FinCom?
That would be helpful, yeah, yep.
So so then it's the final final and so
Yep.
Recording in progress.
To transmit this um ver version two point two budget as presented to FinCom as the final um fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Absolutely.
Ledry, Whiteman eye. Thank you. Um we have two more items um. We if the board's okay, I was gonna go to the special act just because that had required we'd asked for legal comments back and we got the legal comments back um. Thank you, Tamika, for um sending that and um providing those those comments. Um I don't know if the board uh Tom's back on. Um I don't know if the board had a chance to read through them. Um essentially, it seems like a lot of it is kind of um changes that that um legal made because they were okay and then some of them were just kind of at the the will of the board and the board, I think, was pretty clear as to what the desire of the board was. Um I think the big question for me was still in section three with the increasing the number of signatures from fifty to two hundred, not necessarily that it's a question um but just that um I wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to read that piece um from
Recording in progress.
Um.
I mean uh I'm okay with that one for three.
Huh?
Um I have a question on the attorney on section two, but I mean, seven hundred voters are required to sign the, but I'm okay with that.
Yeah, no, I think that the first question was um the the because it was two separate, right, um yeah, the two hundred voters would be required to initiate the first stage of the recall and then seven hundred for the the petition.
Right. Correct.
Recording in progress.
We had talked about that was our understanding and we were comfortable with that, but I just wanted to make sure that that was still.
Yeah.
Um for section two, that was the list of reasons that, you know, they had the original um version had just kind of said included but not limited to and then we had asked if
Mm-hmm.
it needed to be included at all and the response from legal is that could be deleted entirely um.
Right, that that I that I get, but as as I pointed out previously, it is often the case that candidates will challenge what are or are not legitimate grounds for pursuing a recall effort. I'd like to know who the candidates are.
I think it's the people in question that are being recalled and whether or not based on the the act if the reason for recall is valid, which is why she's suggesting just to remove it. So that there is no question because there is nothing for them.
So we're leaving it up to the candidate to challenge that.
To whoever the the subject of the recall is to question.
Right, so. But it comes to us first anyways, right? Before it goes to them. In other words, if somebody files a petition for recall, it really has to come to the board first?
No, it goes
No.
It is not part of it at all.
No?
It goes to the town clerk.
Okay.
The town clerk essentially provides the, is it off? Sorry, um um I think it goes, it's really the town clerk is the one that file receives the the paperwork and kind of works through the processes to the next steps. Um and the board is um not um
Not part of the process.
Okay. So, okay, and then Jen, you had a good question about the school committee? And that is that falls under this jurisdiction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which is nice to know.
Although it says this act would not apply to any elected mem, oh, of the school district.
Right, the school district itself.
Not so, school committee is applica, uh Rutland School Committee.
Right.
Right.
Yes, okay.
So it it applies to Rutland specific school committee members
School committee members.
but not like we couldn't petition recall like a Holden one or some, you know, right? And I just picked Holden because but
Holden one. Yeah.
Right.
Y- yeah, which makes sense because it's Rutland specific.
Right.
And same with Bay Pass, cause we have Bay Pass elected school committee members also.
You know, and they look, everything else seems okay in what the attorney came back with. Uh but I guess we have to make the cooling off period. We have to decide whether it's two years or one year.
I think the board had voted that it would be one year and we just I believe the board had voted that and it was just because the original draft had in two years.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um we had just asked to have it changed to one year because the that was um vote by the board.
Okay.
I think that was right.
Then I'm uh now if we approve this, this has to go to the town, then from there it goes back to the attorney general as a special act to be approved?
Goes to legislature.
Legislature, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So I
Okay with that.
Does the board have any other comments? I mean, I think um some of it was just kind of laying out a little bit more of the process as far as what, you know, happens um and then um I think in section four, we had asked for clarification um just that it would have to be a a an additional election, but we can hold it on the same day as as an already scheduled election.
Yeah, that that was, will it ca, okay.
Yeah, she made the she made the one-year edit cooling off in the, yeah. Um my my only question was the in section two. We we had it at fifty and we talked about changing it to two hundred. It's still listed in here as fifty. Is that?
No, we wanted that at two hundred.
Did we wanna keep it at two hundred?
Yes, I I I would say so.
So it well, the describe, the comment I think in the from legal was that the smaller number of signatures required so originally it was fifty.
Right.
Um the smaller number of signatures required for the affidavit phase of a recall effort is intended to show that the recall ha effort has a modicum of support, right?
Right.
So just that that it's not a huge and then the higher number of signatures required for the petition phase is ten percent of the total number of registered voters. It's intended to show that there's significant support for the recall to appear on the ballot. Um the right number of voters for each phase is a policy decision. I think that we kind of felt that doing two hundred because that's what it takes to call a special town meeting
Mm-hmm.
felt more comfortable because it showed that there was actually some some level of of
Right.
bigger support than
Right.
he going out and finding fifty friends and saying, hey, I don't like Joe Schmo
Yeah.
Yeah.
and let's see if we can get a recall and cause political drama, right? Like so
Yeah. Right, I agree. I just I wanted to point out that in her mocked up
Yep.
version, it's still fifty, so we would wanna request that to be changed to two hundred.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, I think that's my only.
Yeah, no, thank you for for pointing that out because I was reading more in the
Yeah.
the comments and that it was essentially a policy decision, so
Yeah.
um I think that we as a board were very clear on that also.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Uh uh okay question.
Yep.
If it now if we do this special uh uh election and we hold it on the same day, will that require another ballot? Will that require additional expense?
Usually it's a separate ballot, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have two ballots on that election day.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it says this accomplishes the same thing, i.e. that the question of recall would not be included on the regular election ballot. So it's a separate ballot that I think that that's how it needs to be done no matter what. It's either through a special election or
Mm.
Yeah. A separate ballot.
if it's within the timeframe of
Mm-hmm.
a current upcoming election, it would still be a separate ballot.
Um I'm just thinking if we have two ballots, so one is for a recall of an individual and then the other one lists all the individuals who are running for that position. I'm not sure that wouldn't be confusing.
It is confusing, but that's how recalls work.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, recalls are confusing.
It's really, yeah.
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 Yeah, so you know, for the recall and then
Okay.
you know, voting in the individual, right? So you know, the the classic example is Fault River, right? The mayor.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
He was recalled and re-elected on the same ballot.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have the cooling off period where that couldn't happen, but yes, so
Mm-hmm.
it's they're they're not, I mean, I think the intent is that they're not just supposed to be at a necessarily political whim. It's supposed to be for true egregious reasons, right? Like
Right. Right. Yep.
So with that change in the new section two, which was the old section three
Mm-hmm.
um going keeping it at two hundred um or more registered voters of the town of Rutland may initiate the recall process.
Mm-hmm.
Um with that edit, is the board comfortable with the other commentary from um that addressing our questions, the feedback that we had received from the other elected boards and members and um
Mm-hmm.
how legal is?
Yeah, I mean, the one year only has to do with appointments. It doesn't have to do with elections. So.
Well, the cooling off period, yeah.
Uh yeah. Shall not be appointed, so they could rerun anytime they want. Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so um do we want um I think we can just plan on adding this to the warrant then and we'll vote on that at the warrant. Tamika, were you looking for an actual motion for tonight or just if we had additional feedback from
Correct, just if I needed to send something back to Lauren, but I can let her know the one thing you guys would like to change.
Yeah.
I'll get the final final version from her and we'll use that in our uh supporting documentation for the warrant.
Thank you. Um and then is the board comfortable then with moving on to the what you said? I realize it's almost nine o'clock, but we've been pushing off the what you said leadership group for review and discussion of the draft policy. And I would really like to just be able to hold a little bit of space for initial comments and feedback and everything cause I know Austin to put some good time into it um so.
Yeah.
Um this Austin, I don't know if you wanna speak to it. It's essentially a proposal to help um establish a more collaborative uh feeding off of the past couple years with the new school administration and what's been happening with the school administration and the town administrations um to kind of continue that momentum with the elected and appointed boards and committees um throughout the five towns. So this would be a Rutland policy that I believe we've mentioned I Austin, I believe you've mentioned to Jim and I've mentioned it to a few other um uh what you said town members as well and it seems to have, you know, on the surface, good ideas, but um support, but um the thought is that it would help the collaborative process and and cohesion throughout the year and not just during the budget crunch. Um I think one of one of my initial things, Austin, is and this is one of the things I think that we've talked about briefly at the charter committee and it was a topic for the bylaw um when we did the bylaws, is the finance committee representative that the finance committee bylaw and I believe finance committee feels very strongly that they um themselves are not able to serve even as a representative to any other board or committee or anything.
In town? What if this wasn't a town committee?
I I I don't know what their take on it would be, but I I agree, I wholly agree that for me personally
Yeah.
and I've said this many times, that even for select board, I don't think that we should be on other board appointed boards and committees unless we're serving as a representative of the select board. I think that it's perfectly acceptable and beneficial to have a representative from FinCom in a lot of different boards and committees also or um the kind of advisory terminal boards and committees um. So I'm okay with this. I also realize that it says or they're designated, um but I think that there's value to having a a seated member. I'm not one hundred percent sure um to the specifics of if they would feel that they could because it would be above and beyond.
So can I ask a question? So and just Karen, I'm gonna ask just cause you've been a longstanding member of the FinCom. Um MMA has policy subcommittees. Do you believe that the current language of the bylaw would restrict you from serving as a as a appointed member to a subcommittee of the Mass Municipal Association?
That I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
But I would say truthfully, in all honesty, we have so little to do with the budget at this point. The budget responsibility now rests with this board that once upon a time it was to keep us uh impartial.
Yeah, yeah.
But now that we don't have the say in the budget like we used to, there's I fought it the night of the town meeting for the bylaws. There there we don't have the say in the budget the same as we did, so therefore the impartiality is less important.
And I will say, this is one of the conversations and it that was in the charter for the charter committee as we go through this and how other communities are doing it, cause this is our first iteration of going through this process with the new bylaw and it's obviously a yucky budget year anyway and how that works and how other
When was the last time we had a good one? Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I know, no, true story, true story.
We haven't had a good one yet.
True story, um but I think um and how other communities do it because when we took passed those budget, the not the budget, the bylaws, we admitted, I think, fully that they were going to need to be tweaks and um reconsiderations.
We don't need to bring that up. All I'm saying is is at this point, the impartiality is a little less important than it was at one point.
Than what it happened.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking of this more as like a working group, obviously, you know, there's no
Yeah.
Yeah.
no, there's no directives or anything that comes from this other than just consensus, right? And you bring back to your, you know, you're you're almost sort of liaison to bring back to your, you know, select board or finance committee and in the the schools case, their respective uh committees. Um so I'm just thinking, you know, if there's a I hate to say this, but if there's a loophole to allow for finance committee member to serve on this, if we call it a working group um are you in violation of your bylaw by serving on a working group, you know?
Uh Austin, have you presented this to other towns yet?
No, because this is a this is a a policy. So to give you an idea, right? This would, you know, need obviously buy-in from the other communities. This won't work if it's just Rutland meeting every month.
Right.
Um and the superintendent meeting every month, right? So, you know, this is something that, you know, to be honest, I would rather you folks take the leadership on and and reach out to the other board, uh select boards in the other communities and the school committee and advocate this to them uh because this would be a policy um not just from you, but also shared amongst the other member towns. Um so, you know, I think at some point, there's gonna need to be like a champion of this to bring it forward. I'd be happy to support you, but
Okay. Okay.
uh no, I mean, I just informally I brought it up to the um to the superintendent.
Okay.
And I've informally mentioned it to other official, town official in other communities, not all of them by any means but the the overall consensus was it's a good idea, but not having, we haven't talked about a policy, so I didn't feel comfortable
Mm-hmm.
providing anything um. So is there any other comments or questions or anything um as we um I think some of this also, sorry, go ahead, Harry.
Well No, no, so we we we've got the purpose, we membership objectives and so forth. Um do we have a process for this going forward or that's what we have to work on, honestly?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, maybe maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea if the board wanted to delegate some of this work to to work on this and maybe do some outreach if there's if there's at least a support if there's at least a support among the consensus of the board to move forward with something like this, maybe delegating one member to you know, to take the lead on this and bring this to the other towns. This will obviously look different by the time it's finalized because you're gonna get a lot of markup from some other towns, especially where you start talking about the revenue sharing model
Yeah.
component, I mean, that's a, that's a tremendous change to how we allocate resources for the schools. Um, you know, but at least starting the process and working with the other communities.
And the rationale between the fifty-nine and forty-one is that's essentially the state, state percentages, correct, Austin? So, I mean, just so we all are aware, um I realize not everybody probably is as versed in um the way the state operates with school funding as it's quite the cumbersome learning process. Um, but the, the state essentially says that fifty-nine percent of the budget is borne by the um municipalities and forty-nine percent is by the state and then that piece is debet up, so I think it's kind of you, using that basis um for, am I, is that correct?
Yep.
The rationale for.
Yep, tried to follow that closely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think this will give us something we haven't had before, and it's power in numbers.
I think it's power in numbers and it's also some of that cohesion as to, you know, as we're looking at overrides this year, eh last year, this year, next year as five-member towns and involving or not involving the schools in that, cause I think historically, we've done it independently and not involved the schools at all.
Right.
And that hasn't been beneficial, um, so I think some of it's that. So is there um anyone who feels um that they wanna be the champion of this with the other um for Wachusett communities?
Um, I would like to sit down and talk to Austin a little bit more about this to see what the idea of a champion would be.
You can do all the legwork, Harry, and that's good.
No, I, I wanna sit down with you, Austin, okay?
Good. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think broadly, does anyone have any significant questions or changes as presented? Obviously, it would go around and have more than um than this, but
Okay.
This is what, this is kind of what will work off then. Thank you, Austin, for that.
No. Yeah. That's great, we got into that, good.
Um, are there any other future agenda request items? Um, Jen, I heard kind of starting to work towards a policy for um bylaw changes or reviews or, or what that process looks like, um. Speaking as a resident. Is there anything else? And that might not happen immediately, but, but I just wanna put it out there that there, that that's been heard.
Okay.
Um, is there anything else from any other board members? I know we have some outstanding stuff that we've kind of been keeping on the back burner because we needed to get through the budget stuff, so we'll look at that again.
If, if I do, I'll, I'll email you.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Um, we have our upcoming select board meetings, as mentioned, on this Thursday, uh April third. We have the district model for dispatch, it's an information session held here in the Blair Room of the library, six o'clock I believe. Um, and then our regular meetings are April third and April twenty-eighth. Um, oh, sorry, April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth. Um, we have a joint meeting with FinCom on April seventeenth. That will be for the warrant setting and everything, um and May tenth is our annual town meeting. Um, currently, it, the town meeting is, will start at six P M. I think generally, we post a half hour before, I think right now, we'll keep it at that, but we may change that depending on how the warrant and everything, the warrant setting goes, but generally, we post at five thirty for any final odds and ends. Am I missing any other meetings? Tamika, as of right now, that's what we have scheduled. Um, then if there's no other business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from open session to enter into executive session for reason number two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Subject, town administrator, not to return to open session. And if the administrator is okay with it, I would like it to be the four select board members, cause I don't think we have Tom anymore, and the administrator only. Um, given that the administrator is the supervisor of all staff.
I, I, I would second that.
You do move it? Would you move?
Yeah, I'd move the motion for that, sure.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Is there any conversation? Well, I don't think we can to go into executive session. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Second, I.
Ledry.
Whiteman, I.
Okay.
Thank you.